All right, we have one item on tonight's agenda for our city council conference. And it is continued discussion regarding possible charter amendments. Before we dive into that, are there any updates on the elections?
I did it too.
Yes, I did mean to bring that chart in here with me and I'll grab it in a second. But due to the redistricting, we received additional notice that there would be no elections allowed in the month of January, March, or May.
In '22?
In '22, so we're limited to February, April, June, which is also the state primary. August is the state runoff, November is the state general. And those are the only dates you can hold elections in '22.
Of the whole year?
The whole year.
Say that again, please?
February, April, June, August, November.
All right, well, we will turn it over to our city attorney. Are you leading this presentation today?
Sure, and we're having some technical challenges, so no PowerPoint. But I did get, actually burned the gut, printed out for you guys because my printer was also not working. So fun stuff going on. So you all talked about this on August the 3rd and voted on several recommendations from the Charter Review Commission. But on four of them, you asked, or five of them rather, you asked that we come back and discuss those more. And that's expiration of the term, appointment process, recall elections, utility rates, and tip provision. So I just kind of wanted to review each one of those. And if you want, we can stop after each item and get feedback then before continuing on.
Let's do that.
Especially recall, it's a little lengthy.
Yeah, let's do that.
So the first item was the term expiration. Of course, you all know two-year terms currently for council members, odd wards in odd-numbered years, even wards in even-numbered years, the mayor's three years. And take office the first Tuesday following in July after your election. The Charter Review Commission recommendation, and keep in mind, I think they made this in 2019, so some of the years need adjusting, and I'll show you that in a minute. They recommended that beginning in 2023, we move to three-year terms for council members. And in 2024, the terms beginning on the first Tuesday following certification of the election results. The reason the years are important is because we want to be really careful not to impact anybody's current term. And because of the date of taking office, it would impact the next term as well. So that's the, I have a chart that'll show you that helps explain that. But council concerns at that meeting in early August, they felt like everyone should have the same end-of-term date after the runoff, and then updating the year so it doesn't impact current terms. And so this next slide, you can see what the CRC recommendation was. And then the following slide is the chart I talked about that kind of moves all of those dates. And so the odd wards were supposed to begin in 2023 and take office the Tuesday following election results. That impacts current council members serving in odd-numbered wards. So move that to 2025. Even wards beginning, it was going to begin in 2024. And they would take office the Tuesday following election results. Because of our election date limits, I've moved that to 2026. So it doesn't, when you call the election, potentially impact anyone who gets elected in the spring elections. And then the mayoral race, same thing, move that back to 2028 for the same reason. Just because of election scheduling, I wanted to make sure we weren't impacting the elections in the spring and when those folks would take office and when their term would end. So you can see in the red on the following probably three slides where those changes fit in with the language. Oh, underlined quite right. But you can see what that would look like in the charter. And where I've changed the language for the start of the term is in that last sentence in section two on the first paragraph in the last sentence, second paragraph in the last sentence, and the final paragraph. So you would be taking office, whoever elected would be taking office at 6:30 in the evening on the first Tuesday following the date of the scheduled runoff election. So it was following certification of election results. Those, for a runoff election, those would be certified on the Friday after the election. So this would basically be one week after your election and a runoff, you'd be taking office. And that's written so that even if there's not a runoff necessary, it was scheduled when you scheduled the regular election, you'd still be able to use that language to take office.
Honestly, I like that because even if you win in the, I guess, general, that gives you some time to get all these orientation sessions in before you get sworn in. So a worst-case scenario, you do what many of us have done and get sworn in and jump right in. So I like that.
So you'll see on the top of page four, there are several sections where this gets addressed. And so page four is section five of Article Two. That bottom slide shows the year changes. Section six, same thing, CRC recommendation on the top slide. Those year changes on the bottom slide. And then Article Two, section 14, did not need any changes from the CRC recommendation. We're ready to work for either of those things, so that should be fine.
All right, that, any other, did that clear up everyone's concerns with that one?
That really hit, I think, all of the things that we heard at the last time around. So yeah, I'm satisfied and appreciate the clarification.
All right.
Are we talking about the length of terms or just the election, or wouldn't be sworn in?
It's both on this part, yeah.
I don't like the length of term extending. It just means the, I think the two years is adequate. I think the three years is adequate. If something's going wrong or something's going right, that gives the voters a chance to not have to withstand three years or four years. I think it's very reasonable to be two and three years, as is right now. I do like the other part of the, of when you take office, though. I think that's also how it should be.
Just remember, we're just putting this forward to the voters to decide.
Yeah.
And just a comment, yeah. One of the things that I really have revisited over the last couple of weeks is really thinking about the work of the Charter Review Commission. And they've been at work for over two years. It was really an incredibly diverse group of people that have had a lot of experience with city government, both from the inside and the outside. And the fact that they, because this has come up before in other charter reviews, I think. And so the fact that they've worked through the issue and came to the conclusion unanimously that also, I think, to me, these were just adjustments and cleanups and clarification. But it still is the spirit of what they're unanimously recommending. So that has some bearing on my thinking as well.
So now we just have clarification to send it to voters, and I'm good with that.
All right.
All right, the next item is filling vacant council positions. The Charter currently says vacancies in office are filled by majority vote of the remaining members of council. If it's not filled within 60 days, council is required to call a special election to fill that vacancy for the unexpired term. The CRC recommended that we clarify language to match the practice that appointments to the vacancy are for the remainder of the term. And then council's discussion really centered around the selection committee process we've used more recently. Is that something we want to include in the charter or not? And then mayor, I know you asked, who decides the question of calling the election versus appointment? Both of those are council decisions, so they would require council input, I think, to decide which way you want to go. But what the CRC recommended, you can see on the top of page seven. Very simple fix to some confusing language. And then I wanted to show you at the bottom of page seven, language that the CRC had actually considered previously and ended up coming back and removing that underlying portion. So they were trying to potentially codify the selection committee process. And then when they came back to discuss the cleanup language, they decided to go ahead and not recommend that. But I wanted to show you that language so you could see what that looked like when they considered it.
Councilor Hallman?
I think with this one, I had, I think, given the other charter amendment, if it were to pass about swearing in, this would effectively make it so somebody would be appointed until someone's elected, and then they would be sworn in next week. So, right? Or the...
There'll be an expired term, yeah.
But if this amendment's made also pass, I should say, that changes the swear-in date and the term dates.
Right, so they would still be filling that unexpired term, but it wouldn't be three months.
It wouldn't be until July. It would be, it would be like right after the elections take place.
Right.
So that would be maybe address some of the concerns that people had that were appointing somebody to serve for nine months, I guess. And then, yeah, I didn't want to really put in the charter the process really for how the councils should decide to do it. Just like I said in the meeting, I've seen how the councils picked people, the councils appointed committees, and both times it's, you know, resulted in, I've seen names drawn out of hats. So it's not been perfect either way. So I would be hesitant to put in the charter a specific process that future councils might find problematic, I don't know, so.
And if you all wanted to adopt it as a policy, that could be done by resolution. If you wanted it codified in the ordinances, we could probably put that in chapter two of the code. We could proceed either way on that.
Any other thoughts on this one? Councilor Peacock?
I share those same concerns. I personally would rather see it implemented through an ordinance or something, not necessarily tied to the charter. So, yeah.
So, Councilor Hall?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it should be charter language either. And I do feel like we did make some progress with all of the, all of the appointments that have had been made since 2019, since July of 2019. And literally by the time we got to, I think, the fourth or fifth round of the last appointment process, I just wanted to remind everybody that we did take a set of guidelines to try to correct some of the concerns that we had through each process and ask the selection committee if they would basically be willing to use that process and comment as we went on what they felt was working and what might be tweaked. Because I, so I think we have a work in progress of a selection, excuse me, a selection committee process that we could continue to work on as a policy or some other thing.
Okay. So does that answer all of our questions for this one? We weren't sure if we wanted to add it in or not? And it sounds like we're sticking with appointment or call an election, and then we'll fill in the holes later outside of the charter?
Just one more comment. I mean, just based on a revised election schedule, you know, I think we have to have flexibility either way because we may not get to an election date that really meets the timing that we're looking for. So I think we have to have another process to get someone seated as quickly as possible, which I think is always the goal.
Councilor Hallman?
I'd just add too that I definitely prefer the process of having a ward-citizen committee that interviews the candidates and does those things. That would be my preferred, and I would definitely support a resolution or ordinance that says that's the intent we would prefer going forward, just so there is some guidance. But yeah, I wouldn't want to have that be in the charter as a set in stone.
All right, and I like that it clarifies it's for the remainder of the unexpired term, not until someone else is elected. Any other thoughts on number two? Is that all you need from us, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
All right, number three.
Okay, recall. This was, this is the bulk of your slides because there are so many sections. This first section changes the eligibility for when a council member could be recalled. So it's still six months after you take office, but it would end six months prior to the expiration of your term because of the election timing. You know, you don't want to have a situation where you've got a recall election, the person gets reelected, and then you have to have another election to fill that spot under the current language. And so that's what the Charter Review Commission was trying to address.
So basically, with our two-year terms, you have one year, the one-year sweet spot to try and recall someone.
Right. We didn't really get any questions on that last time. The next section, section two, talks about the petitions. You have to have separate petitions for separate officials, reasons for recall on the top of the petition. Clerk gets 30 days. And of course, the CRC recommended after the ENID case that we use the form provided for in state law for referendum petitions. Referendum statutes require a simple statement at the top of each petition, the gist. And the Charter Review Commission actually recommended including language that would give a uniform gist, so we're not fighting about that. And that's basically, you know, this petition, if successful, would mean that the council member would no longer serve in office. Clerk has 30 days to review if one petition, only one petition received to recall ward representative. 60 days for the mayor because 25% of the citywide voters means quite a bit more signatures. And then 90 days if multiple petitions. And so you can see on the top of page nine what that language looks like. That gist is in the second bullet. If successful, this petition will allow voters to decide whether to recall the elected officer prior to the expiration of his or her term, or allow he or she to continue to serve in office. So I don't think we had any questions on that. Actually, we did. It was the Sundays and legal holidays language. There was a request of why is that excluded?
Yeah.
And there's really no good reason to exclude it. So in the revised recommendation on the bottom of page nine, you see where that's just been stricken. The next item, section three, is just adding a publication requirement in advance of the actual recall election. And that's another one that's required by state law. Again, part of the effort to model our charter after state law as much as possible in accordance with the ENID case. So that's a pretty simple addition.
We actually already do that.
You do that in addition to the notice when the petition's filed?
Yeah, I publish, yeah. And it lets them know that the petition's being circulated and the deadline for the signature, so.
Yep, we do that, but this would require an additional notice that's also required by state law that says here's, this election's coming up for recall, a yes vote means, a no vote means. And so that's what would be added.
We would do that in addition to the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Section four, the current charter language says if the petition's sufficient, it must be presented to council. Council must call a recall election, but it can only, be the only question on the ballot. We also have the issue of if multiple officers are recalled, what if we can't conduct business? Because our charter also says elsewhere that you have to have five votes to do anything, regardless of how many vacancies you have. So the Charter Review Commission recommended that we delete the language requiring the recall be the only question on the ballot because, as we've seen this year and 2022, our election dates are always limited in one way or another. You also don't want to set up a situation where council could be calling things put on the ballot just to avoid the recall question. So that would fix that. And then adding language to allow an affirmative vote of the majority of the remaining seated council members of more than four are recalled. So that keeps us in operation.
Councilor Hallman?
Well, I don't know, maybe this is where to interject. Should we have language in there that would invalidate a petition with, like, forged signatures or duplicated, Sarah?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but there is already a process... I'm not sure I understand your question, but there is already a process in place to invalidate petitions. What happens is the city clerk validates them, and then you can file a challenging court that challenges the count, either the finding essentially that the petition is sufficient or insufficient. And so that's where that evidence comes into play, and that's all done at district court.
Councilor Torrell?
Just a clarification, I don't know if it goes to you or to Brenda. If we're following the state's referendum formats, how many days do they allow petitions to be turned in using that, that, that model?
You have to look it up to be sure. It's quite a bit more time because-
I hear it's 90 days.
90 days, I think, is right. It's statewide, so of course they have to have 25% of the registered voters in the state, so it's quite a bit longer length of time for that reason.
So we didn't consider that because of the, the size and scope when comparing and contrasting to our petition initiative to keep it at 30 days to get all the signatures turned in, minus the weekends and holidays? So we're going to keep it at 30 days and not look at the 90 days?
The Charter Review Commission did not consider the 90 days for that reason, because statewide requires quite a bit more signatures.
Right.
So I think we should change it where it can just be no more than four can be recalled at a time, because if eight get recalled, you have one person, which would technically be the majority, appointing the rest of the council. Like, that seems like a very interesting political move that-
My only concern about that, and we thought about that, is it serves as a limit on a right that we have now granted and that is recognized constitutionally. To the extent that the court is looking at this like it does a referendum, that is a constitutional right. And so I worry about interfering with that. It's not clear in the case law how that would, what the fallout would be about it. This is not a situation that's happened before, but I would be hesitant to limit that right in that way. I think setting appropriate limits of time makes some sense. You know, six months after they take office, six months before their term ends, but just eliminating the right to do it altogether, I would be concerned about.
Okay. Councilor Schuler?
Is it even possible to recall all eight at a, at a single time based on when elections are and the, and the terms?
If we go to three years?
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm just saying currently, is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, the six months before the end of term, so like, Rashar and Kelly and I could all be recalled in January.
Right.
So, it is possible we could all be recalled at the same time.
Eight.
Nine.
Okay, so leave it as is?
Stillwater petition recalled all of their council.
They were even more excited about the Enid case than the other city because of that.
Who did, who did that?
Stillwater.
They recalled them all?
They, they had recalled petitions successful or sufficient for, for all of them.
Wow.
And then the Enid case came along and it threw all, the whole process out.
But their, their, their threshold was not near as high, correct?
Oh, no, it was very low.
It was like 90 votes in one of the, 90 signatures in one of the wards.
Well, and- We can only wish and hope. And I do, I, ours is, blame me from experience, it is a great big challenge, and I'm not saying that it should be easy, it should be difficult. But we're, we're locking it down, making it more difficult right now with this language than what it was previously. It might be clarifying some of it, but it's making it even harder. And I, I think, my biggest thing is that threshold of the 25% of registered voters. I think it should be linked more to voter turnout of the last election and have a percentage of that. And that's, that's where I'm at in that, because that registered voters that we've looked at, we learned that those registered voter, voter rolls are not often correct. There's people that have died, there's people that moved away, but they're still sitting there, so you're having to hit a number of people that are not even realistically in that number. So it, I believe that it should be tied to a voter turnout, and you could still make that a difficult number. If you did it, 50% of voter turnout or 60% of voter turnout, that's still, that's a lot more than what you'd have as required as registered voters in the ward, like Ward Three, I don't think, I think it was like less than 3,000 signatures, something like that. I know for the mayor, it was 18,000 something signatures when there was not even, not even that many people voted in the election. So that seems, that is quite a challenge. Two citizens that should have the right to do that. Blame me, I've already had about 30 threats of mine, like, can't wait to recall you, like, give me my six months first. But I think that is a more pragmatic way of going about it, and that's how many places do it, looking at the voter turnout of the last election, and it should be connected in that way somehow, because that's at least looking at people that at least participated in the election.
Councilor Hall?
Again, I'm just going, I, I understand where you're coming from, and you were intimately involved in the process, but once again, I'm going to point to this was something that was sent to the Charter Review Commission to specifically take a look at and investigate, and I would say was probably a much more neutral place for that to be looked at. And this was, again, a unanimous recommendation from the Charter Review to move forward with this language and correct some of the things that city staff recognized needed some clarification.
Councilor Holman?
I would maybe like to see some information on what other, if Oklahoma City, Tulsa, other college towns our size in the, you know, Big 12 Conference, the SEC, whatever, how their recalls are structured, and if any of them require more than 25%, if there's any that are less, if it's, if it's by the last election, Councilor Lynn said. I think that could be helpful information. So, I agree though, you know, it has been reviewed by the commission, and they decided not to make a recommendation that we do that, but I, I do think that's something we should discuss further, though, and maybe get some more information about what other places are doing.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. I just have a, a quick question. So was that information that was requested by the Charter Review, or did they just?
No.
Okay.
No, they didn't.
Okay.
No, I went back to look at that meeting, I'm looking at my notes.
Okay.
It was more to address a lot of the inefficiencies or issues that we had staff processing the-
Really, yeah, it was all about that and the, the Enid case that changed the way we have to process the petitions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Holman?
I would add too, I think that the time limit is really just a matter of the availability of elections, and don't want to recall somebody within the first six months. I think it's unreasonable if they were elected, they got to have some time that they can, you know, have a chance, and then when there's six months left in their term, you probably won't even be able to get an election within that amount of time, or-
Senator Powell?
Just based on the, the news that our city clerk shared with us about how few election opportunities they are, you know, even in 2022, what, what happens if somebody starts the process, they submit petitions, we have to call an election? Do you, it just, we just wait until the next legal available? Wow.
I think that's, if I can, I think that's why in this most recent case, I think if one of them had been successful, there was a chance the recall election wouldn't have happened until after the reelection, or the election for the seat, you know, a new term for the seat.
And then you're required by charter to call another election to fill the seat of the recalled members.
Well, it was like, well-
So they were looking at maybe a couple of weeks of being able to be in office.
Well, if that council member had been recalled from that current term, but the, they then won reelection to a new term, are they recalled from that new term too?
No.
That's so, they're recalled for six months and then they come back? Yeah, it's-
It's very problematic.
Councilor Torrell?
So, my only question is that, because we are new and we weren't here, I don't know how to give, you know, to give input to the Charter Review Commission. Because it's a constitutionally protected and encouraged tool for citizens to address grievances against our elected officials here, the 25% threshold is kind of high. The issue we're talking about, voter rolls are inaccurate, and had we looked at the different calculations and formulas, like the last election and how many people cast votes as a formula, I think we ought to make it easy, but, but hard to, to, to bring these petitions forward here. I'm just, I'm with the mind that, you know, if, if citizens have a grievance that bad, we should make it as easy as possible for them to address it if we can't get answers from our elected officials here. So, at this point now, I don't know if anything can be done to change the formula, at least say that we attempted to look at how each formula would look and see if the outcome would be the same at 25% of the registered voters, or 50 to 60% of the votes that were cast in that ward during the last election here. I think we owe it to the electorate to, to give them that, that we say we did this, and we looked at the numbers both side here. I think it's fair. I mean, so if that's a mechanism we can put in and look and just say we did, and if it comes close, then I think we're okay with that, and they can be okay with that.
Councilor Foreman?
So I have a question. I don't know if this is addressed in the charter or what would happen, but say, for example, Ward Seven decides to stick it to Stephen, and they recall him, and they get enough signatures, is he still on the dais until the election? Is he still acting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Lynn?
My other thing is, once again, I think we're making it harder right now. It just has that six months after office, and I know with the election times and everything, but that's six months prior. If you can get this done in 60 days, where it's 30 days together signatures and 30 days to verify on just the council member, and then there might be an election that, next month, if you, I don't know how-
You have to give 60 days notice.
You have to give 60 days notice. But somewhere you can get in there, but I just feel like if we're ratcheting it down, making it harder, I understand the things that we're up against, but we're adding another six-month bookend on the end where that didn't exist before. I understand the difficulties of making it happen, but there could be the what-if situations. And if voters feel like, hey, this person's got to go, and they're out two months before their term expired, that's two months that the voters said, that's what we want. That's the way it works out. I know, I know the, the math on this and with the new election stuff doesn't make anything easy, but-
For clarification, Catherine, that six months prior to the end of their office would just be when it could be filed during that time? They could file it ahead of time and the elections still take place, is that correct?
Right, right. That's just when the petition could be filed.
That'd be the last day you could file one.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you file one, you know, the first day of that last six months, you have 30, and we didn't have this prohibition, you would have 30 days to circulate the petition, and Brenda has at least 30 days to review, that's another 60 days, and we have to give 60 days notice to the election board to call an election after it's validated, so that's 120 days, and-
And then it can be challenged in court, too.
Right, and then you don't have time to call an election and fill that slot.
None of this, none of this, basically.
It's a imperfect process, and the commission looked at a bunch of different scenarios, and, and there is no fix for all of them, but I think they thought this would at least fix some of them.
Okay.
Councilor Schuler?
I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are places in states where there is not a mechanism to recall.
Right, there are cities in Oklahoma that cannot recall. It's only because it's in our charter that it is permitted.
Right, so, I mean, we have this mechanism, this is something that, you know, there are, I'm not suggesting that we, you know, should not have this, but we, I believe that like there should be some kind of mechanism to address, you know, when we are dissatisfied or upset, or we don't believe that our elected officials are doing the job that they should be doing, or that we think that they are representing us as, you know, citizens, or that they are listening. But I'm also really concerned about this conversation going to a place where we're talking about making something like this easier, or to make something like this easy, because it's already, I mean, it's, it should be challenging, I think, to, A, get elected, because what we do is really important work. As elected officials, we represent constituencies, we have to do things that's from, you know, municipal government all the way up to, you know, Congress. And I think that if it were easy to then just potentially on a whim, recall our elected officials, I, I foresee that being fairly problematic, not just for the process questions that we're, that we're, you know, talking about in terms of like finding election dates, but also, you know, how often do we make one vote that upsets our constituents? A lot. And we can't always make every single person in our district happy about every single vote that we are potentially, you know, going to make. And so I think having an ability to, you know, take these things as they come to us, where we are giving our elected officials an opportunity to continue that dialogue with our constituents and to continue to push to do better, because the mechanism for us to be held accountable is regularly scheduled elections, which is how our system currently functions. I am not arguing, again, to say that having an extra measure of protection is not there, but I am concerned about lowering barriers to recalling elected officials, because it, I think that it should be, it should, there should be some difficulty, because it's difficult to get elected, and so, and it's difficult to vote, and it's difficult to show up in those spaces already, and we're making those things challenging. And so there should be some conversations about, is that proportionate to showing up and registering to vote and making it out for elections? And is recalling elected officials equally challenging to getting people elected to vote? I don't know what the answer to that is. So, I, I'm just, it's kind of a cautionary, like, what, what is the right formula for that? I'm not saying that what we have right now is correct, or that what other council members are proposing is not good, but I think that we should think about this and what is a way to allow citizens to have the input and the impact that they desire in a meaningful way.
Thank you. Councilor Lynn?
Well, I'd say right now, our, our research shows that Norman, Oklahoma is tied with the hardest in the nation to recall an elected official, and we make it extremely difficult. I assure you that even with a machine that was pumping like, like just gangbusters this last summer, it was an impossible task. It shouldn't be impossible, it should be challenging. But right now, it is almost impossible with hundreds, if not thousands, of people working on this. It was an impossible task. It shouldn't be like that. It should be where, it should be correlated somehow to find a medium happy ground. I don't think that 90 signatures should get somebody up for recall. No, it should be a citizen-led effort. If that's the way they feel, they should put in the work, and they should have, but they should be able to have a task that is achievable, even with 24/7 efforts that were, that were put out a year ago. It should be something that could be achievable. That's why I said we should at least look at different, different things, see what they do, and see if we can find somewhere where like, hey, this, this makes the most sense out of this, where if they're going to put in the effort, they can achieve this. That, even if you get somebody recalled, that doesn't even mean they're going to lose their seat. That means one group said, hey, we think that, that we should put this back up to a vote. And there you go, I know that's a pain in the butt if you got to run another election in the middle of your term. I have no doubt, it's a pain in the butt regardless. So, but, we should be able to give our citizens that option. Like I said, don't make it easy, but don't make it impossible either.
Councilor Torrell?
I know we're talking about this a lot here, but any chance we can send this back to the board to relook at with some inputs? Or are we right now just discussing what has been submitted so far, and it's going to go forward for a vote regardless?
Or are we, right now, just discussing what has been submitted so far and it's gonna go forward for a vote regardless? Um, just to answer questions again, I have to say it's, you know, this is a constitutionally protected activity and it's one of the last things that a citizen wants to do. Um, you know, when, when it comes to citizens airing their grievances to their elected officials here, um, we do it all the time. I hate, I mean, we've only been on job for about a month, but I've gotten emails and conversations going back to February tenth about issues here in Norman. And, you know, I talked to them and, and so, so the thing is that they, they do talk. And, and like I said, if, if a recall has to happen, it's because they weren't listened to. Okay? And, and so that's, that's, that's the last resort that any citizen group wants to do. I could tell you that from experience, that, um, that's not what we wanna do if our officials, uh, listen to what we have to say. Um, but like I said, we do have the highest and the hardest recall process in the nation. And, you know, we, we should make it easy. And we've had this discussion before outside these, these, with these buildings here that, uh, the, the formula should be looked at. And ag- again, you know, working long hours and getting these signatures is not an easy task. And we need to make sure that the citizens understand tool of last resort and to at least say that we did look at all the numbers, different ways here to say, hey, um, you know, we did do this. So with that in mind, I don't know if we wanna talk about this anymore, but do we send this back for review for suggestion changes or, or what do we do now? We could be talking about this for hours tonight. It's, it's a hot-button topic here in Norman for the last year and a half.
Really? I didn't know. Oh, we're stumbling.
Okay. I think you touched, or Lauren touched on this and I just wanna get a little bit of clarification. So, um, Ms. City Attorney, you said that it is a protected constitutional right, but then you also said that there are other cities in our state that do not do this. So how is it both?
The charter is our constitution essentially. So it's a right we've got in our charter. It's a right that, that we've provided to the citizens. Um, initiative petition and referendum, our constitutional rights arising under the Oklahoma constitution and the Enid case used that, those processes under the Oklahoma constitution and applied them to recall petitions in Enid. Most of that case, and the way I read it, it's, it was more about process than anything else. So I think, you know, we've got to follow the, that state law as it regards, as it relates to process.
Okay. And then, um, just two things I wanted to clarify here. So I don't think that we should go off a percentage of voters because we live in a college town and that percentage changes all the time. So we could have an election in one month and it would be completely different than what it would have been three months prior to that if college were, were in session. So I don't think that that's a very fair way, um, to do it versus number of registered voters. And then the last thing I wanna say is Norman, I don't really think it's the most difficult. I just think it didn't happen because there was a lot of fake signatures and I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Forman.
So I'm not in favor of changing the standard of twenty-five percent to number of voters. Um, the difference between Councilmember Holman and I would be hundreds for me versus like dozens for him if it was a percentage of voter. So it's not sitting in the same bar for each ward and I don't like that. And then I don't wanna make our recall experience any easier because we are duly elected officials. And if we're gonna uproot the will of the people that did go out and vote, it should be equal because we don't have a standard, like in the constitution, to impeach the president. You have to have high crimes and misdemeanors and we don't have a bar. So I, I would not be in favor of lowering our standards or making it easier to do a recall.
Councilor Schuler.
Um, I was just curious to know, um, who did the study on who has the most restrictive, um, recall process? Like where, where is that coming from? Um, and I would love to look at that.
We'll find it. Um, it's, we'll get it to you guys. I think it's fair. You guys see that data.
Thank you.
I agree. Okay. I'm sorry. Councilor Holman.
Uh, I, I also, I think regi- current registered voters, I think, is a more accurate, uh, number or reflection of the ward than how many people voted two years ago. And so Norman alone, just based on the census data, we grow by about two thousand people a year, almost. And so that's spread out throughout the different wards, some more than others, of course. But some wards can see a lot of growth in population in two years and registered voters. And I don't know that looking at what happened two years ago or if the amendment to change to three years passes, that looking at what happened three years ago in Ward Seven or, you know, Ward Seven's seeing a lot of housing growth right now. Ward Five is seeing a lot of it, especially along Highway seventy-seven area. I mean, all of our wards have things going on. And so I, I don't know that looking back at previous election would be a accurate way to do it. I don't, I don't know that twenty-five percent of current registered voters is the right, right threshold either. I think, you know, that's a valid argument to make. And that's why I think I would like to have some more information about what other cities are doing that are our size comparable college towns. And then, uh, you know, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, some of the big cities in our area and see what they do. But I, I would also agree too that, you know, the fact that some cities don't allow it at all would de facto make them more difficult than we are, uh, to get rid of elected officials. And I don't think the governor can be recalled in Oklahoma's, yeah. So, um, there's a few state elected officials that can't be recalled at all. So I have no recourse to get rid of the governor except wait every four years and try to vote him out. And so, I don't, can you re, you can't recall US senators either, can you? So you gotta wait six years for that one. Um, and so anyway, I just, uh, uh, I would, I think we do need maybe some more information about comparables and what other places are doing before we make a decision about, about that.
So I assume we'll have a follow-up study session. It's not like we have any open elections.
Yeah.
And I still have to draft the ballot language for everything that you all are sending forward. So we've got time to, to.
Slowly whittling them down. So this one, we would like to have a little bit more data and then discuss further later.
So that would take us to, if there aren't any other issues with the recall that you want us to bring back, um, I think these other changes were not the subject of any discussion. So that brings us to number four, which is on the bottom of page twelve, and this will be utility rate discussion. So as you all know, any increase in utility rates within the city's control must be submitted to the voters for approval or rejection. And the CRC recommended essentially that the staff would provide you a rate study for each utility every year. And that council would submit a rate increase for one or more utilities based on that rate study at the next council election. And then the language also allows special actions for unexpected needs. I think the thought there was, there wasn't going to be a year where at least one of our utilities didn't need something, a little bump of some kind. And then, of course, the idea is smaller, smaller increases more often rather than large increases every five, six, seven years. Um, so that was their attempt to address that issue. And I know this is a different, difficult one, too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start the comments on this one. It's basically what I said in our first discussion. Voter fatigue is real. We have a staff that works incredibly hard and having these studies every year seems like a lot of work when they, if it's under a certain amount, then we should do an increase like literally every other city in the state of Oklahoma. But I still wanna protect voters' rights from having another astronomical raise like they saw decades ago because of a council decision. And that is a way to accomplish both, to stop the sticker shock. I mean, this stress with our staff and the utilities department when we gear up for these elections because they know that if we don't pass this, we can't make needed improvements for the safety of our water, meet certain government required mandates, like it's, it's literally make it or break it. And that is ridiculous. And I think we, we will function more efficiently as a city if we change that to, again, protect from these astronomical raises, but allow us to incrementally raise it. Uh, and also saves money on elections and avoids voter fatigue. So that's my two cents on that. Councilor Holman.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we, we're not gonna be requiring there be a vote on a utility even if it wasn't needed just to do it.
Well, if we go with my suggestion, that's moot point.
Yeah. Says based on, in here, based on the rate study, but I get, yeah.
So.
Uh, but yeah, that's kinda what I was wanting to, yeah, require that it doesn't just get pushed off or the council doesn't think about it for several years. But also I didn't wanna be like, okay, we have to have an election if there's no staff says we don't need to raise it this year. Well, the charter says we have to ask voters anyway.
Okay. Council Berlin.
What, maybe, uh, Mr. Mattingly can answer this. What is an acceptable amount? Is it, if you, if you think about it, to put the limit on this, is it one percent, two percent? I mean, that we could be able to approve without it going to voters and anything above that needs to go to voters?
That's what, uh, you know, each April, Anthony brings forth the funds. And so you are dealing with me and we see the, the bottom line number, if it has a nice balance in it or not. And at those times, each April, we could all look at and say, is that just because we did one large project? And next year we're gonna catch up and it'll be, it'll recover a little bit. Or Anthony will say, ooh, you're on a downward spiral here. Those are loan payments. You're not gonna get any better. So you better start getting some more money in that fund. And so then your, your idea the other day is, uh, Lawton, I believe, uses a CPI. And I would think it'd be cool if you guys would, so we look at a fund, we all see it, oh, oh, it's going lower each year. And then you could vote a CPI, whatever that is, adjustment that comes out every year and just bump it to two percent, one point seven percent, whatever, just to nudge it up and try to keep up with chemical costs, electrical costs, the things that are going up as needed. And then if you, if, you know, maybe I'm all lobbying, say, hey, I need one of those. And you guys say, no, I don't think you do this year. We move on. And those are little nudges. And then if it ever something big, DQ says, oh, you gotta disinfect your well system. Sixteen million dollars. Okay, that's not one point seven percent. So that would be, then we go to a vote of the people on a case-by-case basis to do those big, large gains.
And Anthony may be able to verify when we, when you use the word consumer price index, there are multiple. So we would wanna definitely clarify which consumer price index the public could look to year after year. And usually you wind up in the same place over time as long as you're consistent with which CPI we're using. So, you know, over time, over ten years, they'll probably all get you to the, the same spot. But each one of them may have little weird spikes over time. But we can do a little homework on that one, too, and bring you back a recommendation as to which one of those is most logical to tie utility rates to. And then in the event anything larger than that is required, we put that on the ballot for the voters. And the voters would have to approve that change in the current system.
That's, that's where I'm at. I just do, would it need to be a certain number? It, it would have to be a certain number that we put in here to say, hey, we're gonna vote, like if it's only up to, like I said, two percent, I'm just throwing that out there because I have no idea what is the right number. But we're gonna allow the council to make this, uh, to put it to a vote in council for this increase. Anything above that has to go to ballot. So I guess we just need to figure out which, what's that threshold that we throw in this language.
I agree. I'd like more feedback on the CPI that you would recommend and to look at the.
Just understand that if you use a CPI, you have to explain that to the board. That may be one reason to just use a dollar when you got two percent or three percent or five percent.
An amount not to exceed.
Yeah.
Well, I lean towards two because that allows incremental increases that aren't, again, the sticker shock where your bill every five years is like, oh, my gosh. Slower and then still gives a lot of authority to our residents to, to watch where their utility money is going as well. But I, I, I would like to pause this one as well and see what Lawton does and see if we can get some guidance on two percent, three percent.
Yeah. I have the resolution all forwarded to Catherine, but what they passed and they're working back.
Perfect. And as kind of a segue into the final one, this is something that a previous council, I'm sure they were in a tight spot. I'm sure they were just trying to, to make that budget balance. But it has crippled our utilities for decades after that. And it needs, we need to find a, a compromise between, you know, will of the people and just being able to, to operate.
Right.
Effectively, which leads us to the final one, which deals with TIFs. And because I don't, as Councilor Hall put it so well in our initial discussion, I don't wanna be one of those councils that cripples future councils on opportunities that maybe presented them that there's no way we can foresee. So before we start commenting, Catherine, you wanna give a little overview of what number five is?
Sure. This one, uh, is the only item that came before you that the commission had not had an affirmative vote on. Um, and Chairman Thompson asked that it be brought anyway because there was a lot of debate and it was a tie vote. And we even went back and had another meeting to discuss it some more, hoping more members would be in attendance. And I believe it was, uh, the same number of people and the same, uh, outcome. So.
And different people, too.
Yes, different people, but same outcome, which their discussion was, you know, that really kind of reflects the sentiment of the community. People are a little bit torn on this. Um, so what they looked at, um, and that's on the very last page, is requiring a vote of the people for any TIF district that fudges sales tax increments to fund improvements within the district or any amendment to that project or that TIF. Be required to go to a vote, so.
Councilor Hall.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate my primary concern, which you've just touched on. And, um, that is being that council that will also determine for a very long time, um, what we do about TIFs if it goes to a vote of the people. And I understand where this is coming from. I understand people's frustration, which I share in many, many ways. But I think Ms. Walker, um, uh, enumerated at the last meeting, um, the steps that have to be taken to, um, put a TIF into effect anyway. I mean, there's already a pretty significant process, a time-consuming process. It's complicated. And it's, uh, a tool that unfortunately in Norman has gotten a really bad rap because of one of three TIFs that we have operating right now. So that's really my primary concern as I see a lot of, um, uh, the same path to how we got to the utility rates going to the vote of the people the last time out of frustration and disappointment, lack of trust, all those things. And I think that this is where this is coming from as well. And I also have, um, concerns of what you also just outlined. There is not a clear path and we tried really hard to take this to a diverse group of people to give us, again, in a neutral setting, some guidance on how to go forward. So I don't feel like, even though, you know, there's strong feelings about this one way or another, I'm, I'm not comfortable sending this forward in its current format.
There's a piece that, um, the way the current verbiage is written, you know, if it, if it includes any sales tax increment, um, you know, then, well, obviously if it doesn't include sales tax, if it's just accounting, they can do it and they really don't need a whole lot of assistance from us. If I'm not mistaken, in U N P TIF, there was clarification that I believe, uh, may have had Mr. Francisco's pinned to it that indicates when we talk about TIF being a geographic piece of a map, to be able to even further drill down and identify what sales tax has not leaked from another Norman retailer into this new map, that, that sales tax dollar doesn't count. It's new to the entire pot. So I think that's mission-critical language that in any TIF going forward, I know Anthony will fight for it.
Just understand that New York's new part of TIF project plan was by far the most complicated TIF project plan ever adopted in Oklahoma for that reason. The council always had that concern about cannibalization. And so we tried to write a project plan that would prevent that. It was so successful, it certainly made it more complicated to administer. And so I do think that's what is attempted here, is just to make it clear that it's just sales tax. How successful that is is to be determined.
And so what was unusual about that one is that only a portion of the sales tax came back into the TIF and the city retained forty percent of it. And then we had this growth rate that we also protected and it was a historic growth rate in sales tax in Norman that we also protected to try and protect the general fund. You can't stop cannibalization completely. People are gonna shop where the new exciting place is. But that was the way we were able to try and protect the general fund.
Okay. Council Forman.
I'm very anti-TIF and I know I was alone on this the first time we talked about.
I'm very anti-TIF and I know I was alone on this the first time we talked about it and I just want to resound my sentiment. Um, if you want to bring this community back together, we're pretty divided right now, um, revisit the U N P TIF. I've never seen such hard Republicans and hard Democrats work together on a referendum petition. Um, it's five million, if it's more, it needs to go to the people, it's their taxpayer money, it's a very hot topic. The more that we can put in the hands of the people, the better. So I think we should send this forward to the public and let them decide because it's their taxpayer dollars. If they want it, they pass it, if not, they don't, so that's where I am.
I think the issue is, if we make it so difficult, they're never gonna have to use that tool because no one's ever gonna propose it. And we miss out on a very important economic development tool. I've got a group tax of mayors all over Oklahoma celebrating when they pass a TIF. And, oh, I love the TIF, we too, we've used it for da, 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 in our community. And I'm just like, well, I live on a different planet, so.
I think our community cares more about their taxpayer dollars than Costco, you know, that sort of thing. Like, I think it matters more to the public. We should let them vote on it, we should just let them vote on it. What's the harm?
Councilor Hallman.
So I don't think, you know, based on my following the history of the U N P TIF, the result there, in my opinion, is not a matter or, it's not something the city council throughout the years mismanaged. It's, in my opinion, market issues throughout the whole country in regard to strip malls, big box, uh, national retail chains, things like that, that I don't think the city council in two thousand six and seven was envisioning was gonna happen. Uh, they thought there was probably gonna be significantly more expansion of all of those types of things. And as soon as U N P TIF started being built, those big boxes, I mean, Circuit City closed, I think, within the first year. And that was a long time corporate business in the United States. And it was like a big deal, oh, we got Circuit City in Norman now, and it was gone, corporate bankruptcy within a year. Um, we've seen that, you know, in Ednold Parkway with Toys R Us and the mall with Sears. There's nothing any city council in Norman could have done to stop those businesses from closing. And so I think the issue with the U N P is, one, you have folks that wanna, want us to vote on it because they don't like that the council, uh, didn't go forward with the arena deal. Some folks, uh, wanna vote on it because they don't like how the U N P area turned out. Uh, but I agree, it all revolves at over one, one out of three. And the campus corner one is, has been successful, has done what it was supposed to do. Um, and the center city one was, we went through the whole process, it was not controversial, we didn't have people speaking against it. Um, it is a property tax, so it's a little bit different. Um, but we haven't really been able to see the results of it yet. But, uh, our expectation is that it's going to transform that area in a very positive way by fixing all the sidewalks, the curbs, the, all those types of things. So I don't know that if voters had voted on the U N P TIF, that that would have made a difference in the outcome of what's there today. If voters had approved it back then instead of the city council, I think we'd still have the same, what's there now would still be there and the issues that people have with it would still exist. People just might feel better that they voted for it, I suppose, instead of the council. But I do feel like the council is elected to make these decisions. And I don't, again, I don't think that the city council is the reason why the U N P TIF area hasn't gotten a Nordstrom rack or a Macy's. And so, uh, you know, um, I am, share the apprehension about making this type of change in stone. Uh, but, you know, I'm not, also not opposed to letting voters decide what they want to do either, so, uh, yeah.
Councilor Peacock.
Yeah, uh, just want to second exactly what Stephen just said and what also what Councilmember Hall said. Um, I think this was born out of frustration. And I think it's fair to rem- uh, remind ourselves that we can't vilify every single TIF just because we've had a problem with one. Um, I, I firmly believe that devil's in the details. So, uh, I would hate to do anything that bound a future council's hands, uh, especially in light of the fact that, you know, sales tax, that's the only way we can fund our city. So to take another tool away from the tool belt, um, that just gives me a lot of heartburn.
Councilor Forman.
I still don't like TIFs, but if it doesn't go the way that I would like it, then I would like us to consider a super majority vote of council instead of five-four for something over five million at least to consider down the road.
Would that be a charter change or policy ordinance change?
Land of Attorney, where does that live? It may not be written anywhere. It may have just been a regular agenda item, so.
Because we have some things with super majority rules, like protest maps.
Yeah, I, I, we could probably find a place for it to be in the ordinances.
Okay.
That would be fine. It could be in the charter as well, but.
It's a good compromise.
Councilor Peacock.
Would that be six or seven votes? Seven, that's my thought.
Well, do we want to bring this one back with looking at that as an option? Or do we want, okay. Well, we got two off our plate. Councilor Hall.
Um, I, I also, if we're, if we're kicking this back, I also want to talk about the clarification over, about the five million. Was that actually what was written into what they recommended? Okay. Because I, I also am not in favor of a dollar amount. Because I think that way you can just split the baby anytime you want to. And whatever the number is, we're gonna have some that are, we'll just have an open door to either go under five million slightly. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, I don't think it should have a cap on it.
That's, that's what they were asked to consider, but it was not part of their recognition.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with that consensus of the commission. Okay, just making sure.
Because, yeah, if you raised it to like fifteen, you'd probably get a proposal, well, this is fourteen point nine.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, I just wanted to clarify because I thought we had taken that piece out.
Three different ones that are four point nine.
They are keeping that out also.
Councilor Studley.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding because there's a lot to take in. So we're saying we don't want a cap, which I agree with that. But we're saying that if council's gonna vote on it, it has to be a majority vote of seven. And if not, then we take it to the people and the people can decide if they want to vote on it.
No, we're just dying. Yeah, we're just dying.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be in the charter, we would just change the, our procedures for considering and approving TIFs going forward. So they'd have to get seven votes instead of five.
So we would never have an opportunity for the public to make a decision in that?
Correct.
Um, a, a referendum petition, so if council voted it down, the public could file a referendum petition, put it on the ballot and approve it, or vice versa, if council voted yes, the public could always do a referendum petition to kill it.
Right, it's approved by ordinance. And when it comes to council, it comes in the form of an ordinance, it's a legislative enactment that is subject to referendum.
Which was, was attempted, I would just add.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Was attempted after the TIF deal that we passed. There was a referendum attempted.
Councilor Schurer.
Um, I just have a, a question about, I'm gonna kind of walk it back to the, um, when we originally changed the charter to make it so that, uh, citizens had to vote on utility rate increases, did that go to a vote of the people like this would? Or was that just a council decision?
To amend the charter, it requires a vote of the people, so. And that was actually, I believe, an initiative petition, to put that in the charter.
Just trying to understand the mechanism.
Yeah. Nineteen seventy-five, it's an initiative petition.
Councilor Hall.
Um, another, just a question, um, wasn't, wasn't it a really close vote on the U N P TIF?
It's five-four.
So that wouldn't have met the super majority?
Do you have follow-up, Councilor Schurer?
Yeah, so if we decide not, no, that's, you're fine, I just, as you were talking, I thought of, I thought of it. Um, so if we decide not to move this forward, there still could be initiative petition for citizens to create this. Create, like, that, they could come forward and say, we want to vote on TIFs. And then do initiative petition process. So there is still a mechanism for citizens if they really would like to move this forward and vote on these in the future. Okay, just want to clarify that as well.
Councilor Lynn.
Are there any cities that we know of that, uh, have citizens vote on their TIFs?
No.
Councilor Turner, is that your question?
That was my question, too, and I'm, you know, um, that was my question, one of my questions. But, um, I agree with you and pretty much the idea about the super majority here. What would that do, though, if we go to a super majority? Will we end up in a deadlock? I mean, so what are, what, what other situations do we have requiring a super majority to pass something right now currently?
We have one tonight.
Yeah, on the issuing bonds.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so.
But to, to speak to one thing that's pertinent, to override the recommendation of the statutory TIF committee requires a, a super majority vote of council in the statutes right now.
Okay.
So that's pertinent to the TIF and it's in the local development.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Forman, was that your idea, then, to, what the reason for the super majority was do exactly what you're saying, to override? I know you said a bunch of gobbledygook that I hear, but from what I'm understanding, to, to, to override something in, in ordinance requires a super major, is that, what'd you, what'd you say?
Part of the process for establishing a TIF is that it is, has to have a recommendation or a review by all of the Haxinger's divisions, the county, the school district, all the property tax divisions. So if they recommend against establishing the TIF in whatever area is proposed, the council could still approve it by a super majority vote.
Got it.
So that's in place right now.
That's what we're talking about right now, is to implement this for, this going forward, for, for the TIFs, right?
For any, another one.
With no, with no, with, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so for me, a TIF, like, if it were to be over five million dollars, like, that would require a super majority vote. Because it's, it's a very big commitment, it's on sales tax, obviously not. What we're talking about is only sales tax, but yeah, a super majority to approve it.
I, I just see a potential issue where voters might want to chime in on that, uh, either forward or against it. And will this, will this cut them out of the loop potentially, you think? Is that what I'm hearing, too? This might cut them out of the loop to voice your opinion?
Well, I don't think we're gonna put this to the voters. So that, that was my suggestion, like, well, if we're not gonna do that, could we at least require a super majority?
Thank you.
The Local Development Act is not a super majority, it's a two-thirds majority, so it would be six and not seven.
Okay.
But that's what we would put in there.
Councilor Hallman.
So six or seven, is what, if we.
If you wanted to match the language that's in, already in the Local Development Act for TIFs, it would be six.
So instead of requiring a vote of the people for TIFs over five million, I agree, I don't want, honestly, want to have an, an amount attached to it. Uh, but if we weren't gonna go to a vote of the people for a TIF, you know, I, I could see a, requiring a six vote of council to do it. And then, yes, the public has the, the ability. I, I think if this type of change is gonna be made to TIFs, like, five million dollar, all, you know, always goes to a vote, I probably would prefer that be a citizen petition initiative. And then citizens vote on it, do it that way, instead of the, this council making this decision to change, you know, how future councils do everything. So, um, I would support a, probably a six, uh, the idea of the six, six vote to approve a TIF. And, uh, and not have a, uh, number attached to it necessarily. If we were gonna do it with voters, I would not want to have a number attached specifically. So, but I, 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 I like the idea of the council voting on this, but it may be being a higher threshold.
And Ms. Walker, it sounds like there's not enough consensus to put this on the charter, but we would still like to continue discussing options to ensure that it is a more strenuous discussion involving the council to pass a TIF of any amount, not a, an amount limit. So I don't know if we want to just take that to a study session and take this off, is everyone comfortable taking this off the charter review plate?
Yes.
Well, I know. I'll live.
Okay, so, all right, so let's, let's do that, but, uh, let's.
Can always come back.
Perhaps I can go to finance committee or something, I don't know. Um, but yes, that's the direction we will take on that one, then. Councilor Hall.
I, and I guess I just would add that, um, you know, of those choices, um, I, as, from what I know right now, I'd be more supportive of the two-thirds majority, the six, especially because it would be more consistent with the local development act, which is what the TIFs are under anyway, right?
Well, excellent work, friends. Councilor Peacock, the last word.
Just want to clarify, this still only applies to sales tax TIFs, correct?
Yes.
Uh, well, that's something we could discuss, a flying option, because we have, we're a lot, a lot more flexibility if we go that route. Okay, so we, we knocked off a couple, a couple are coming back, progress?
Yes.
Okay, I'll see you all in fourteen minutes.
Ha ha.
Tordorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. City Council Conference Minutes of July 28, 2020. City Council Conference Minutes of September 8, 2020. City Council Conference Minutes of February 23, 2021. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of April 22, 2021. City Council Special Session Minutes of May 4, 2021. City Council Special Session Minutes of August 3, 2021. City Council Minutes of August 10, 2021. Norman Utilities Authority Minutes of August 10, 2021. Norman Municipal Authority Minutes of August 10, 2021. Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of August 10, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
Let's still approve.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item two, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Thursday, August 26, 2021, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been to approve. The proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Thursday, August 26, 2021, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Norman. Whereas the United States Congress designated August 26 as Women's Equality Day in 1973 to commemorate the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution granting women the right to vote. And whereas this designation was the culmination of a massive peaceful civil rights movement by women, which had its formal beginnings in 1848 at the world's first Women's Civil Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York. And whereas the observance of Women's Equality Day not only commemorates the passage of the 19th Amendment, but also brings awareness to women's continuing efforts towards full equality. And whereas the city of Norman recognizes that women play a vital role in every aspect of community life in the city of Norman, including but not limited to government, employment, education, medicine, business, law, religion, sports, entertainment, family life, and the arts. And whereas the city of Norman celebrates the sacrifices and accomplishments of the suffragettes and civil rights leaders of the past while still recognizing the ongoing challenges in providing women with equal opportunities in education, employment, entertainment, sports, and other aspects of society. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 26, 2021, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the contributions and accomplishments of women in our community while continuing to strive towards full equality. I would now like to recognize Ms. Rhonda Stock from the Chair of Women in Action for All to accept this proclamation.
Women in Action for All of Norman accepts this proclamation for Women's Equality Day. In behalf of all the women's groups and organizations that work to better the lives of women and their families, coworkers, and community members, we are grateful for the chance to represent them for the search for women's equality is ongoing and difficult, requiring persistence to protect what has been accomplished and to prevent the erosion of human rights in our community. The mission of Women in Action for All is to work together to voice our concerns and develop strategies to confront the issues facing our community, state, and nation. We believe in action. Heroic women before us faced violence and discrimination as they fought for the right to vote. It took almost 75 years for them to be able to mark a ballot. Every time a woman in Norman votes, registers another voter, writes a postcard in support of a candidate, donates time and money to petitioning or legislative reform, or works a polling place, she fulfills the vision of the brave women who have come before her. May we be worthy of their sacrifice and teach our daughters and sons to value women's rights as human rights. Thank you, Mayor Clark and Norman City Council for recognizing the importance of women in the city of Norman.
Clap.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Stock, for that. Now on to council announcements. Ward one, Councilmember Studley.
We didn't know whether to clap because you bang your gavel if we do. So just saying.
Fair enough.
So I want to bring up something across Norman and then specifically for my ward. First, I want to thank you, say thank you to Ricky or Richard Anderson. He is in a wheelchair and travels frequently down Gray Street. And he brought it to our attention that one of the paths that he travels frequently had a new fire hydrant built right in the middle of the sidewalk. Granted, it did follow all of the requirements. However, for someone that's not used to that being there or trying to get around on a sidewalk, or if you just look at it, it's just an awkward spot, literally in the middle of the sidewalk. So thank you to our city manager for reaching out to our city staff and getting that stuff taken care of pretty quickly. So they are going to move that fire hydrant for us. So Ricky, if you're watching, you should be able to roll through there pretty soon. Sorry about that. With that, I want to say there have been quite a few things that I have seen around town and that you guys have sent information to me around town. I want to give you my email address, which is wardone@normanok.gov, or my cellphone, which is 405-876-9170. And I would like to encourage you that if you see something odd, like a street that has gone like this and buckled like Biloxi did, or an AT&amp;T box that doesn't have a covering over it, let us know these things so we can fix them. These are easy things that can be fixed. If not that evening, then the next business day. And that's what we're here for. Let me know. I would be more than happy to help with any of those kinds of situations. And I know Ward one often doesn't think that we hear you, but I'm here, I'm listening, and I do report any problems that I see. So let me know and I'll help you take care of it as best as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward two, Councilmember Schuler.
I don't have any announcements.
Thank you. Ward three, Councilmember Lynn. Thank you. Ward four, Councilmember Hall.
Yes, I hear weekly from constituents all over Ward four. I really appreciate all of you sharing your ideas. And so, yes, always reach out either with our cellphone number or our ward email address. And we are trying to work through long lists of issues. I have been focused on streets, parking, and sidewalks from many, many, many Ward four issues this week. And I want to thank our Public Works Director, Mr. O'Leary, for patiently working through a list of 17 items last week that we're trying to address. So we do want to hear from you always. I also wanted to just put out one more time. We signed a contract with Neighborhood Alliance in July, and I have added a form to my councilmember page and both Ward four pages. But just want to make sure that anybody who has an interest across the community in learning more about what the Neighborhood Alliance is going to do or wants to participate in a focus group, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you want to organize your neighborhood. We're looking for community leaders, representatives of neighborhoods, other kinds of organizations. If you have any interest in building strong communities through strong neighborhoods, by all means, I encourage you to self-nominate and fill out that form, and you'll be contacted about participating in a focus group soon. Also, wanted to thank city staff for now having voter registration forms available right here at City Hall. Anything we can do to make it easy to register to vote is a step in the right direction. So I'm glad that we have that available here now. And I also wanted to point out that this Friday and for several Fridays in September, you have an opportunity to ride on our public transit system, on our city buses. And you can actually have a conversation with a staff member. If you want to meet at 10:00 a.m. this Friday at stop 4117 at Webster and Tonewa and ride on Route 10 to experience public transit in Norman and to get any of your questions answered. I hope you all take advantage of that opportunity. And then finally, just on a personal note, by the next city council meeting, we will have lost a very valuable staff member, and that's Dr. Carrie Evenson, our stormwater director. And we've had the good fortune of having her working tirelessly and relentlessly to raise the issues of stormwater and how stormwater impacts our community and the kind of mitigation efforts that we have to get really serious about. And she has just been an invaluable resource to me personally, as a resident, trying to learn about these things and also as a council member. And she's got really big shoes that we'll be filling, and I wish her well in her future endeavors. So thank you, Dr. Evenson, for everything you've done for Norman.
I certainly second that. Thank you, Councilmember. Ward five, Councilmember Tordorello.
I get throughed that. I'd like to remind everyone in Ward five that next Saturday, the 28th, 10 o'clock, I'm having my second town hall meeting at the Little Axe Community Center. One of the big topics, the only topic that was requested was well water issues in Ward five. So we've got city staff, we've got a member of ACOG. We'll be out there to address all your concerns. All you need to do is just show up. So this Saturday, the 28th, Little Axe Community Center, 10 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman from Ward six.
I just wanted to acknowledge the one-year passing of former Councilmember David Perry, who sat on Ward two with us. I got elected with him, and I just want to acknowledge that and let his family know that my thoughts are with them. And no more announcements for Ward six.
Thank you. Ward seven, Councilmember Holman.
Definitely second that, those thoughts about our former colleague. I want to take a moment to thank the residents in Cobblestone Creek that came out last weekend to meet about getting a new fence installed at the end of their cul-de-sac. I want to thank city staff for coming out on a Sunday and joining us to explain the process that the property owners are going to have to go through. It's just kind of an example of some of the issues that we often deal with up here. In this case, it's just a few residents that have a cul-de-sac that's got a kind of a gap, and they want to put a fence in, but it's more complicated to do that than you might think. And then I also want to thank the residents along Jenkins Avenue. We have a major city road improvement project coming here in the near future that's been voter-approved. It's improving Jenkins Avenue from Lindsay Street all the way down to past Reeves Park, almost to Lloyd Noble Center, actually. There are several residential properties that are along there. There's fully grown trees that are on both sides, the campus side and the Norman side. And a lot of the residents have questions about it. So I appreciate them requesting to meet with me, and we had a pretty good discussion about their concerns. And I was able to meet with city staff this past week and discuss that in further detail. So I'm looking forward to having more of that discussion with the residents and staff as that project moves along. Also, I want to encourage everyone to attend or watch the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting on Thursday at 4:00 p.m. Every third Thursday of the month in this committee, we review things like public transit, ADA accessibility, issues like Councilmember Studley brought up about the fire hydrant, road projects like the Jenkins Project and other voter-approved and non-voter-approved construction projects going throughout the city. So if those types of issues are of interest to you, we talk about the ridership numbers for public transit every month. So if you wonder how many people ride the bus and where they ride the bus, this is the committee where we talk about those, that data. We take questions, comments. You're welcome to email, contact, call or contact any of us if you have any questions about those issues that we can bring up and get answers for you. Because I would just add to what my colleagues have said is that there are a lot of issues throughout the whole city. We're almost 200 square miles. And a lot of times, I've noticed in my time on council, that problems can be really easy to fix if we just know about them. And it's hard to see every issue and every problem going on everywhere. So if you see a sidewalk that's messed up, or you see something that doesn't look right as far as a fire hydrant being placed in the middle of a sidewalk, let your councilmember or any of us know, and we can generally get those things addressed pretty quickly. I would add that city manager Pyle was able to address an issue on Campus Corner recently where we got new parking meters installed. They're bigger than the old ones, but there's less of them. And you can pay with your phone and all sorts of stuff now, so it's easier. But one of them was kind of placed right in front of a business's door, and the door opens outward, and so it definitely created an issue right there. And it was able to get moved to a different location very quickly, and business was very thankful for that. So those are the type of things that we deal with up here, and we can usually get things fixed pretty quickly if we just hear about it. So I appreciate all of you coming to the meeting tonight. I'm looking forward to the discussion ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward eight, Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. In case this was missed, last week, the city of Norman has started providing live closed captioning for its streaming public meetings. The live closed captioning will take place on the official City of Norman Vimeo channel, which can be accessed from the city website. In addition, meetings will still be livestreamed via YouTube. And if you have any questions regarding accessibility, please contact the city's ADA technician at 405-366-5424. And I just want to commend staff's efforts on getting this initiative off the ground.
Thank you. I've got a few announcements. First, I'd like to thank the Depot and all of the volunteers that make the Summer Breeze Concert Series a reality. It was another great series, nice safe way to be out and about this summer, so excellent job there. And with the Embark Ride Alongs, I will actually be attending the one on Friday, September 3rd. If you would like to join me, I'd love to have you. With this week, I have a virtual teen book club. This is my brain in love. You can register for the event on the Pioneer Library System website. It's Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Then this Saturday, I have another Move with the Mayor. So for you golfers out there, it is at Westwood at 9:00 a.m. The golf pro Rick Parrish will actually be giving us instructions on how to pitch, putt, and drive. And range balls will be provided and golf clubs upon request, so I hope you will join us for that. And then on Monday, I have my first student resident roundtable. I have two this year, one that deals with students age 6 through 12 and one for college students. And this first one is with our 6 through 12. So I'm excited to talk to some young Normanites about ways we can improve our community. We actually don't have a meeting on September 7th. Wanted to point that out for those of you that are planning. We have the Oakland Municipal League Conference. And so I'm going to wish you all a happy and safe Labor Day in advance of that holiday. We will begin with the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all councilmembers, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items three through item 20 be placed on the consent docket. Item three is confirmation of the 2021. Got the mics? I'm going to have a motion to approve the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Just to clarify, that place items three through 20 on the consent docket, and that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item three is confirmation of the 2021-22 City of Norman Youth Council nominations. Joining us for this year will be Jackson Baden, Aubrey Baker, Noah Bowie, Daniel Dobson, Destiny Hopkins, William Nichols, Aspen Osgood, Harrison Powers, Amy Ringer, Irie Rogers, and Jackson Voto. Item four, consideration of the mayor's appointments as follows. On the Human Rights Commission, Michael Cahaga, Ward six. Norman Housing Authority, Lee Lawrence, Ward eight. Public Safety Oversight Committee, Gregory Gilkey, Ward three, Russell Rice, Ward two. The Reapportionment Commission, Catherine Leedy, Ward three. Item five, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of July 31, 2021. Item six, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of July, 2021. Item seven, acting as the Norman Utilities Authority, authorization to purchase one horizontal wood grinder from Roto Chopper Incorporated in the amount of $805,476 utilizing General Service Administration contract. Item eight, donation in the amount of $9,985 from the Cleveland County Justice Authority, acting as the Cleveland County Public Safety Tax Committee, to be used to purchase airbags and chemical monitors for Fire Stations 5 and 6 and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item nine, a donation in the amount of $45,965.21 from the Cleveland County Justice Authority, acting as the Cleveland County Public Safety Sales Tax Commission, to be used to purchase one Zoll X Series Cardiac Monitor for the Norman Fire Department and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item 10, consideration of change order number two to Contract 2021-6 with RDNJ LLC doing business as ATEC Paving, decreasing the contract amount by $44,624.51 for a revised contract amount of $1,138,447.99 for the FYE 2021 Urban Concrete Project, 2021 locations, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $56,922.41. Item 11, consideration of change order number two to Contract 2021-9 with RDNJ LLC doing business as ATEC Paving, decreasing the contract amount by $4,745.20 for a revised contract amount of $989,517.59 for the Interstate Drive Reconstruction Project, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $49,475.88. Item 12, consideration of change order number one to Contract 2021-77 by and between the Norman Utilities Authority and WEB Construction Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $2,824.50 for a revised contract amount of $340,824.50 for the Norman Water Treatment Plant 36-Inch Filter Effluent Pipe Improvements Project, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $20,306.85. Item 13, consideration of Contract 2122-32 with TRT Enterprises LLC doing business as Strategic Janitorial Solutions to provide custodial services for the city's public transportation fleet and fleet maintenance facilities for the total monthly fee of $9,495. Item 14, consideration of change order number one to Contract 2021-104 with H&amp;H Plumbing and Utilities Incorporated, decreasing the contract amount by $3,225 for a revised contract amount of $46,715 for the 12th Avenue Southeast Drainage Improvements near Sawgrass Drive Project, and final acceptance of the project. Item 15, consideration of change order number one to Contract 2021-112 with Nash Construction Company, decreasing the contract amount by $156 for a revised contract amount of $28,377 for the 12th Avenue Southeast Paving Improvements near Sawgrass Drive Project, and final acceptance of the project. Item 16, consideration of bid contract with FYE 2022 24th Avenue Northwest Sidewalk Accessibility Construction Project and associated bonds, and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 17, consideration of amendment number four to Contract 1920-32 with the University of Oklahoma, extending the term of the lease agreement for office space, service base, fleet storage, and warehouse garage space to be used for providing transportation services until December 31, 2021, or upon substantial completion and occupation of the North Base Complex Project Phase 1. Item 18, contract settlement, agreement, and release Michael W. Griffith and Lisa C. Griffith, owners of certain property located at 5430 Northwest 36th Avenue, resolving imminent domain action filed in the Oklahoma District Court for Cleveland County regarding the acquisition of certain property interest necessary for the 36th Avenue Northwest Bond Project. Item 19, Contract 2122-47, a right-of-way license and indemnity agreement with Michael W. Griffith and Lisa C. Griffith regarding the conditions for use of certain city right-of-way fronting property located at 5430 36th Avenue Northwest. Item 20, a Resolution 2122-8 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for calendar year 2022. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Schuler.
I just wanted to make note of the, one of the appointments for the Public Safety Oversight Committee from Ward two, Russell Rice. I just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve on that committee, and I look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Councilmember Studley, were you pushing your button? Okay.
I'd also like to second what Councilmember Schuler was saying with Russell Rice's appointment. So I think you'll be a great addition. I do have a question for Mr. Mattingly. I'm sorry. Don't be mad. On number seven, for the wood chipper or the Roto Chopper, I know you and I had talked previously that there was one that was out there that had broken. And can you tell us a little bit about that? Did it get repaired? Is it still under warranty? Is this the same thing? Is it an addition to?
No, it caught fire, and it's in a legal matter right now. We're trying to get some compensation back because it was under warranty. And there was certified, Vermeer was working on the equipment, and there's a lot of evidence that their technician might have done some things that led to that fire. Our legal staff is handling that.
Okay.
And so, but we're going to go on and buy another because it made sense to, instead of renting the three-year payback, to go on and buy another, and we'll take that money and put it back in our funds.
Awesome. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much. And thank you guys for doing that. We use those in our community gardens, but I'm sorry. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, just a quick question about 14 and 15. The sawgrass, it looks like the work is done. It looks really great. It looks like we're saving some money here. Is that what I see?
Yes, thank you very much. Scott Sturt, City Engineer. That is correct. We went out, we negotiated with these contractors, and in the end, we were able to reduce some costs. Not a whole lot. Every little bit helps. And through good project management, and again, just working with them, we were able to keep it under budget and get done all the work. It is complete. And yeah, I'm pretty pleased the way it looks, too, so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate all the staff's work to get that done. It definitely means a lot to the residents, and it's connected to the fence thing that I was just talking about. So for those that don't know, so, great. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
Since we're in the spirit of thanking people for serving their appointments, to Michael.
Cahaga.
Cahaga, I love that. And Ward six. And then I felt bad for Gregory Gilkey in Ward three. He also was on the Oversight Committee, so I just want to shout out to him also.
All right. Seeing no other comments, that concludes the consent docket. And with consensus of council, I would. You're killing me. With consensus of council, I would like to jump to item 25. We had two speakers that agreed to speak thinking it was going to be during the consent docket, and they do have to get back to work this evening. Okay, we will move on to item 25. Consideration of Resolution 2122-36, setting an expectation that residents follow guidance from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to prevent the spread of COVID-19, including wearing a mask in public indoor spaces and getting a vaccination, and affirming the ability of businesses and organizations to require masks before entering its space. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Dr. Bratzler. See his face, but hear him. There you go, so. Point of. Yeah, we did.
So I guess, Mayor, would you like for me to just give you a very short update?
Yes, please.
So Oklahoma, we're still in the middle of the pandemic. The Delta variant, which is highly contagious and spreading through the state. Over the past two weeks, we've seen the daily cases starting to plateau a bit, but we're still seeing more than 2,000 new cases a day in Oklahoma. And I think perhaps the most disturbing thing is we have nearly 1,500 people now in the hospital in Oklahoma with COVID-19. At the peak, at the peak of the pandemic. At the peak, at the peak of the pandemic back in January, we had about 1,900 people in the hospital. So, we're approaching the levels of hospitalization that we had a few months ago, but recognizing we have far fewer nursing staff now, nursing has become an enormous need across the entire state. I can't speak to the Norman health system, but in our system today, we had 22 patients waiting in the emergency room with COVID for admission to bed. So, the number of cases, particularly in the hospital setting, has gone up dramatically. Oklahoma is still generally in the high transmission zone that the CDC defines. There are only a couple of counties in the entire state that are not in the high transmission zone and they're out in the panhandle of Oklahoma. So, the, the, the one piece of good news, the one piece of good news is that the cases for the past two weeks seem to have plateaued a bit. We're not rising real rapidly, but we're certainly still not going down in terms of the number of new cases daily. The number of hospitalizations though often lags and our hospitals are quite full. And remember that when a patient is very sick and ends up in the hospital with COVID-19, they often have fairly prolonged hospital stays, which makes it difficult to open those beds for other patients. I think any of you who've been listening to the note, the news knows that many small hospitals around the state are literally having to transfer patients long distances, oftentimes out of state to find hospital beds for specialty services and others because our, our major metropolitan hospitals, both in Tulsa and Oklahoma City are very full at this point. And again, I can't speak to the Norman system, but I know they've had a lot of patients with COVID also. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council for Dr. Bratzler? Seeing none, all right. Thank you, Dr. Bratzler. We also have Dr. Boyd from the Norman Regional Health System.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
I'm an intensivist ICU doctor at Norman, also the Chief Medical Officer. Specifically for our area, we've seen an increase in Cleveland County of over 200% in admissions to the hospital since August 1. Right now, about one in four of admissions to our facilities are related to COVID. The interesting thing is, and the most important thing is that none of the people requiring ICU care or on ventilators are fully vaccinated. We do not see sick people who are fully vaccinated. It is only to the unvaccinated people that are requiring high levels of care, high levels of oxygen and being on a ventilator. As Dr. Bratzler alluded to, their time in the hospital is weeks. And we don't even know what their long-term ramifications are going to be medically from that type of an acute, acute illness. The message is simply, get vaccinated. It's safe, it works. The science is there and it's now FDA approved as of yesterday. And it makes a significant difference in how sick you get, even if you happen to get COVID, if you're vaccinated. So the message is, get vaccinated. Does anybody have any questions for me specifically?
Councilmember Hall.
My specific question is, we have an age group, the most vulnerable in our community and across the country, our children 12 and under, who cannot get vaccinated. So what do you recommend for the people around them that care about them? What should they be doing to protect those that absolutely have no choice about whether they're vaccinated or not?
You know, we're still in, we still need to medic, we need, still need to distance and we still need to wear a mask around anybody who is at higher risk for COVID-19. The pediatric population's certainly been more affected with this variant. We have sixty-some-odd children admitted to hospitals in Oklahoma, I believe, with COVID right now. So, you have to be protective of those people who cannot get vaccinated or who have medical conditions to put them at higher risk.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, I want to thank you both for joining us tonight. You've both been great during this whole thing, providing medical knowledge to the council. We are elected officials, you're the doctors and I appreciate you sharing your expertise with us and updates on the current situation in our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council regarding this resolution? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, I will turn it over to you. It's for council questions. Not during this presentation.
Okay, the first person registered to speak on this item is Cody, Cody Giles, Giles, I'm sorry.
Anybody feel it? It's just, it is tense up in here. So this is fun. Here's the thing, it surely this will pass. Like if it doesn't, I'm going to have a lot more questions than if it does. And in fact, I don't think it goes far enough and I think it's, it's wild that we were so incredibly bold at the beginning of this thing with a mask mandate and we came out and we were so strong and Mayor Clark, you know, you were leading the charge on this and you were the first in, in Oklahoma and it was, it was a big thing and we all rallied around it and we're here. It's worse than it's been. This is terrible. And, you know, all I can think about are, more than anything else, is the kids. I'm almost to the point where I, where it's so tough to reason with adults because they've made up their mind. With the kids, it's completely different. Some of them don't have a choice to even get vaccinated, whether it's available to them by doctors or by their parents. And that's concerning. And so, again, I fully expect this recommendation to pass. I don't think it's strong enough. I don't think it goes far enough. I think we need another mandate that's not on the table tonight. So I just want to say thank you for passing this in advance and if it doesn't, I'm going to have a lot more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Maggie Logue.
First of all, I wanted to let you know about myself. I'm a registered nurse and have been for 46 years. In 1985, I had a kidney transplant and I take immunosuppressive drugs and have since then and will for the rest of my life. So I'm considered very high risk for getting COVID. I am opposed to the way this is written and to what, you know, opposed to your expectations or the city's expectations that I have to wear a mask to make everybody else feel more comfortable and to get vaccinated, to make everybody else feel comfortable. You all that are wearing masks, if they work, you should be fine, whether I have one on or not, same with the vaccines. The only time that I've worn a mask, even during your mandates, was when the businesses were forced to make their customers wear one. And the businesses that I frequent, I wore one for them out of respect for them and their ownership of that business, not because I was told I had to wear one. I am not a child, most people in Norman are not. Certainly everybody here is an adult. I think we can make our own healthcare decisions and we also know what the consequences are of our decisions. I'm also not a fan of these vaccines. And I guess the thing I read in, that the paper had put out the other day that said you were going to strongly encourage compliance to all these things. And I kind of am interested in knowing, what do you consider strongly encouraged? Are you going to start preventing people that are unvaccinated or unmasked to go anywhere? To go to the grocery store, to go to the pharmacy, to go to baseball games? I mean, this, this is a concern of mine and I'm, I don't think I'm the only one. If you want to promote something, you know, promote people getting in better health. Quit smoking, losing weight, building up their immune systems. Instead of getting behind this vaccine, they're talking about Delta variances. I don't know if you all are aware, but they don't test, there is no test for Delta variants other than later on when they do a, I believe it's called a genome test, but that's usually only done on people that have been vaccinated so they can see if they actually have it or not. So I just want to let you know, I, I'm opposed to it. I think it should be a personal decision. It's my God-given right to have choices in my life and I don't think you or anybody else on this council needs to be telling adults what they should or shouldn't do. I think that should be a personal choice.
No applause, please.
Okay, our next speaker is Courtney, Courtney Lauer, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Courtney, L-O-E-W-E-R. Okay, we'll move to the next one then. Frank Kump.
Good evening, my name's Frank Kump, I live in Ward Two. We're going over the same old dead ground. We know the masks don't work, there's been so many tests that prove they don't. We just had a report, test in May of 2021 from University Louisville. They're finding state that does not support the hypothesis that SARS-CoV-19 transmission rates decrease with greater mask use. Researchers stated that quote, "Masks may promote social cohesion at rallying symbols during a pandemic, but risk compensation can also occur." We also have a study in November 2020. The Annals of Internal Medicine reported that researchers in Denmark, that surgical masks did not protect the wearers against infection and the coronavirus in a large randomized clinical trial of 6,000 subjects that were non-infected volunteers. We have data that shows that states that did the lockdowns and the mask mandates like California, New York have had higher rates of infections than states that did not, like Texas and Florida. The good Dr. Boyd talked about hospitalization 200%, that's a good number, but he didn't give raw numbers, so we don't know what that means. And we do know about the Delta variant, but like most viruses, it's more virulent, it's easier to catch, but it's less deadly. Also, let's talk about Israel and Sweden. Israel, they were completely locked down, highest vaccinated rates in the world. They have major issues with vaccination, I mean, with infections. This was reported last day or so by New York Times. Sweden, they did no lockdowns, no facial mandates, nothing. Last four weeks, they reported average of zero COVID deaths. The good doctor and someone else here talked about the children. We know that for the children, they have a survival rate of 99.99% or better without the shot. Also, at the NIH, the suite of scholarly works, medical hypothesis article by Barut van Schelboim called Face Mask in the COVID-19 Era: A Healthy Hypothesis and It's a Devastating Analysis of the Harms Caused by Widespread Universal Masking. I'd like to add that, you know, we have God-given rights, they're enshrined in the Constitution. Just because we have a medical pandemic or emergency, those rights don't go out the door. If you people want to sound like Arnold Schwarzenegger and tell me to screw my freedoms, well, you can throw them in them, but we're coming to the point where we're going to have to present papers to go shop and go out. And finally, I just found out I have a heart problem, so if I take the shot, I may die from it because of the blood.
Thank you.
Carrie Kemp.
My name is Carrie Kemp. I'm from Ward Two. I've been a registered nurse since 1995. I graduated with a nurse practitioner in cardiology. I have worked with vent-dependent children at Arkansas Children's Hospital. I've worked in surgery, pre-op, med surg and recovery room. I spent my last five years nursing, teaching in the LPN program at Metro Tech. When Dr. Fauci tried to mandate masks last year, I was perplexed. Masks don't work against viral infections. This is the science behind masks. This is the science. When a surgeon wears a mask in the OR, and only the surgeon, it decreases the risk of post-op bacterial infections. I've seen almost every one of you handle your masks improperly and I've seen the, our city littered with PPE, Personal Protection Equipment. I would like to teach everybody how to wear masks. It's been established for decades, the science. Why Fauci attempted to mandate masks, I have no idea. I have, I was confused about this. Control, intentional lies, obedience, silencing us? For me, this caused such distrust of my elected officials. This is my second, my second city council meeting to attend because I trusted, I trusted you all. The NIH and the CDC are not following the scientific guidelines. They are not following the scientific guidelines. And when these doctors said that we were at high risk, I just checked the CDC profile today in Oklahoma, it says we are at low and moderate risk, low and moderate risk. I believe the real truth here is censorship and intentional causes of distrust. When you go in to see a healthcare professional and he's wearing a mask, doesn't that make you kind of distrust him? Especially when you know that the science is, it only prevents bacterial infection. It doesn't work with viral infections. It's frustrating. It's frustrating for me as a nurse. The real truth, you have to look at the numbers and I know that they, the CDC.
Thank you. Three minutes is over, ma'am. I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
There is a clock on there. Next speaker is Gary Markstow.
There you go. Counsel, Mayor. I could list facts, but facts aren't what people with ideologies are interested in. They're not interested in facts unless it meets their perception of what the facts may be. Couple of speakers here just mentioned facts, so, and I listed a whole bunch of facts that I could go over, data that I could go over. I'm not a doctor, but I once played Pecos Bill in a school play. I know that makes no difference to you guys, nor does the ideologies of doctors make any difference to me. And to think for a moment that someone in the medical profession is immune from having an ideological view that prompts them to want to exhibit control over individuals is naive. To think for a moment that that doesn't happen with doctors is completely naive. The bed deficit is due more to. more to healthcare worker shortages than it is to the fact that there's not enough beds. And one of the council members mentioned our highly vulnerable, sensitive children that will be suffering from this disease. The data, the facts, point to that 0.001% of children that are infected exhibit detrimental effects from this disease. All right? More children exhibit detrimental effects from the flu, and the common cold, and from car accidents, and walking across the street than they do from this disease. So don't tell me you're caring about my kids when all you care about is control. If we're going to use public monies to incentivize the usage of a drug or a medical treatment, then we should do so for actual FDA-approved treatments and drugs. Monoclonal antibody infusion therapy effectively works to treat those that are infected. I know. And it may be anecdotal, but five members of my family have contracted this disease since the Delta variant came out, and all of them went through this treatment, and all of them are perfectly fine. If we're going to incentivize something with money, we need to incentivize something that works, that we know works. Obviously, this vaccination stuff may not work, because now they're saying that vaccinated individuals are going to get infected. If you've taken this monoclonal antibody treatment, you have antibodies, and the facts are that you are more likely to be resistant to the disease than someone who has been vaccinated. All right? Now, I'm sure the FDA-approved Pfizer. Any coincidence that the director of FDA is also on Pfizer's board of directors? I could go on and on and on, but you guys are just looking for treatments that allow you and your ideology to exhibit control. Let's incentivize some things that work, not some things that you feel good about.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers in there.
Okay. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Lynn?
I trust you. I trust you as the public to make your own health decisions. I believe in freedom. I believe in liberty. I think that you're adults enough, or smart enough, and astute enough to make your own health decisions. I find this is a divisive issue that is, this is even on the council tonight before us. We know that the dividing lines on this. And if it's not going to be put to a vote that is a mandate, it seems like a waste of time to me, that we have recommendations up here, just so we can have these arguments. Me, I believe in medical freedom. I believe in your medical freedom. A business could require that you have dancing monkeys and clowns to enter their business. That might change your mind about going there. And while this does affirm the rights of businesses to require a mask, I know which businesses I will choose to frequent or not, based on their decisions on this. And I've already made those decisions in the past. And I'll stand firm by that. So those that oppose this, and why we're even having this discussion, I have no idea. So, once again, I support your medical freedom and your liberty. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I think, given where we've been with mandates and shutdowns and things like this, this seems very reasonable to, based on the information we've received from our local medical professionals. This council, we haven't been hearing from Dr. Fauci, or the CDC giving us presentations. It's been medical professionals at Norman Regional, OU Medicine, and the State Medical Association. And so, to encourage people to follow those recommendations that are being given by our local medical people, and reminding folks that businesses have the right to require a mask if they want to, because businesses are hearing that. Well, the state, the governor says I don't have to wear one. Well, a business can require you to wear a mask, even if the governor says you don't have to in school, or that cities can't enforce a mandate. If a business wants to, it's their right. And so we are just making clear from an official city standpoint, that businesses have that right to require it if they want to. And officially encouraging our residents to follow the medical advice that we've received from the local medical professionals. In Ward Seven, I have heard residents reach out to me, requesting that we do a mandate. I haven't heard any residents in Ward Seven ask me not to do anything. So encouraging people to wear masks and following it, and reminding that businesses have the right, instead of mandating it, seems like a pretty good compromise at this current point, in my opinion, based on the information that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
So, I also have been following the advice of experts locally. We heard from Dr. Bratsler. We've heard from Dr. Boyd. We've heard from Dr. Cook. We have an emergency management team that's been at work tirelessly since the beginning of the pandemic for almost a year and a half now. And, you know, I think there's, there's always going to be a disagreement about how you use studies, how you interpret data. But we have chosen deliberately to follow the guidelines of the CDC, to listen to our local experts in the fields of medicine, epidemiology, vaccine development, all of those sorts of things. And so, we aren't calling for a mask mandate at this time. What we're trying to do is stay consistent to what we've been doing from the very beginning. And that's following the science as best we understand it, from the people that have been guiding us every step of the way. And we can see for ourselves that, you know, we have a rise in cases. And we have to choose to believe that we are getting accurate information. For example, one of the comments that was made about whether we're in a high transmission state or not, everything that I've looked at, the entire state of Oklahoma is red, the highest transmission, with the exception of a few counties, as mentioned by one of our professionals. So, I think it's important that we be able to say to our community, based on the best evidence that we get, not how we feel, but the best evidence that we have at our disposal, that we would be remiss to not say that we recommend wearing masks, socially distancing, washing your hands, and above all, get vaccinated. That's one of the most powerful things that you can do to protect yourself, your family, and the rest of our community. So, I've also gotten a lot of feedback within my ward. Most people, I think, would like us to take a little stronger step. But I also have people in my ward that their opinions are represented by those who have spoken here tonight, and we have to take all of that in consideration. So, this is all about recommending to you what we know is the best face forward to manage public health in our community. So, I think it's important for everybody to understand that it doesn't take a mask mandate to do the right thing for yourself and your family and your community. Anybody can choose to put a mask on today. Any business can choose how they want to...
Ma'am, if you can't be respectful of the councilmembers up here, I'm going to ask you to leave. Can you please ask them to leave, Captain?
Ma'am, I have signed up to speak if you still recognize me.
Thank you for coming tonight, ma'am. Councilmember Hall, please continue.
You can recommend or not recommend. We have the right to choose.
Listen. Thank you for coming tonight, ma'am. Chris, will you shut those doors, please?
I am in full support of this resolution tonight, because it's clear-cut. It states what we can do as a community to protect ourselves, to protect our public health. And it's up to you to decide whether you want to take that step or not.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Studley?
I just want to hold this up real quick. This is from the CDC's website right now. And if you see, every state in our nation is in red, except for Rhode Island. So, every state is at a high transmission level. Rhode Island is at substantial, which is the next one down. So, we are in an emergency crisis situation. We are back to the level that we were three months ago, and we were going in the wrong direction. My kid is going to continue to be homeschooled, because she is immunocompromised. She has bad asthma, and I would hate for her to get sick and be in the hospital on a ventilator, because other parents choose not to allow their children to wear masks at school. So, or choose not to wear them outside in public. If you're indoors, wear your mask. I work in a dental practice. I wear my mask all day long. There are aerosols that fly around. And whenever we're in your mouth working, I can get sick. I have to wear this to protect myself, and to protect the person that we're working on. So, I agree with Councilmember Hall that this is a time where we're not mandating anything. We're strongly advising you to follow what the CDC is recommending. So anyways, I would like you to just make sure that you all do your own research. Pull the CDC up for yourself and see what they say. Look at other studies that don't just go with your views, because I've looked at some that are for and against. And I try to make my own educated decision for myself and my family. Unfortunately, because we are declining, some people are not making the correct decisions that will continue to allow us to stabilize or decrease. So, I'm grateful that we're doing this. I'm also in agreements with Cody, that I don't think it's enough. I think that we should enforce a mandate. I know I have several people in my ward reaching out for enforcement, and some against. So, I'm hoping that we don't have to get to the point where we're mandating it, because enough people will recognize how serious this is. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say, this is an issue that should never have been politicized. It should never have been progressive versus conservative, Republican versus Democrat. This should have been an issue that, you know, everybody came together for the public good, and was willing to check ego and political affiliation at the door, to get this thing under control. So, it's kind of a shame that we're having this conversation tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. I will simply add that the decisions we've made were never to infringe on anybody's freedom. They were to keep our businesses open, to keep our kids in schools, to keep our hospitals functioning for those that don't have COVID-19. There's a three-hour wait if your kid breaks, if you break your arm, if you have a heart attack. These are real problems that we're trying to address as we continue to navigate our way through the COVID-19 pandemic. Not to mention, we have 20,000 new residents in our community. So, it's the perfect time to remind us all to follow this important guidance, because everyone's health and the welfare of our community is our top priority. We ask you to wear seat belts. We ask you to not drink and drive. Lots of things that impact your health and the health of others. So I am more than happy to support this resolution tonight. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. If the resolution passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against, Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. And in our excitement to have that discussion, you were right. We did not vote on the consent docket. So, councilmembers, I need a motion to approve the consent docket.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 21, Resolution 2122-32 of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Norman Municipal Authority issuing its Room Tax Revenue Note taxable series 2021, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving and authorizing the execution of a room tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain transient guest room tax revenues, and containing other provisions relating thereto. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and award the sale of the note to RCB Bank at an interest rate of 1.89%.
So moved.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize our finance director, Mr. Anthony Francisco, to share the bids received today.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, members of the council, trustees of the authority. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director of the City and the Treasurer of the Norman Municipal Authority. And I am pleased to present to you the bids that we got in response to the solicitation that council authorized on July the 27th. We received seven qualified proposals, ranking them by lowest interest rate to highest. We had two proposals, and an interest rate of 1.89%. Now, that's not exciting to anybody but a finance guy. But, to have, you know, this financing come in under 2% is a really good deal. And because we had this tie bid, really close bids, that's a good thing as well. We're recommending the proposal from RCB, because basically, they are offering the right of the authority to call the bonds, or to prepay them, if you will. And that gives us flexibility that we would like to have. So we're recommending that proposal at 1.89% for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution and award the sale of the note to RCB Bank at an interest rate of 1.89%. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 22, Resolution 2122-33, authorizing the Norman Municipal Authority to issue its Room Tax Revenue Note taxable series 2021 in the aggregate principal amount of $3,882,000, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, approving execution of a room tax agreement by and between the City of Norman and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain transient guest room tax revenues, approving and authorizing execution of a note indenture, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, and containing other provisions relating thereto. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and award the sale of the note to RCB Bank at an interest rate of 1.89%.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco, anything to add? Okay. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this? Seeing none, any public comment?
No. No public comment.
Any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution and award the sale of the note to RCB Bank at an interest rate of 1.89%. Trustees, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 23, Resolution 2122-34, appropriating $500,000 of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money of 2021 entitlement funds from the special grants fund balance to be used to incentivize COVID-19 vaccinations. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
To adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Tortorello?
Lot of calls this weekend, text messages and conversations from my ward and other people in different wards, that question the wisdom of incentivizing people to get the COVID shots. So I did some research of my own this weekend, and, you know, looking at different states and different municipalities that have done this before in the past, they really saw no increase in the number of shots for new vaccinations. It was very miniscule for the efforts and funds put into it. So, I have a question for Mr. Francisco, on the finance portion of this. The ARPA funds and the final rules or the interim rules here, do they allow us to award money to those that have already been vaccinated in this program? Or are only those that are not vaccinated?
That is a subject of conjecture. We do believe that vaccination programs in general can be incentivized with ARPA funds. There is an interpretation that the ARPA funds are to be used for ongoing expenses, future expenses, if you will. There is a consideration that vaccinations in general are clearly a purpose for the ARPA funds. So, it's a matter of conjecture. Now, if the question is about the appropriation in general, certainly Certainly there are vaccination incentives that can be used uh for future vaccinations and you could use all of the funds in that way. Um, or however many you might, the amount of money that you might spend, but about past vaccinations, that's a matter of conjecture.
Okay, so what you're saying, if I hear you right, that we can use different money to fund this program for, so the, the, so just to clarify. The whole idea of this program is to um incentivize vaccinations and to give away gift cards for an ultimate $25,000 prize at the end. That's would also include those that are already currently vaccinated, correct?
No, sir. The proposal, as I understand it, is that the gift cards would be for folks who come to get a vaccination. At a proposed vaccination pod that the city would present.
Okay.
Or a series of pods. The, the, the raffle or lottery, if you will, um, that, that has been proposed to have a $25,000 grand prize. Would be for everyone who has been vaccinated. So it's actually two different things.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Um, going back to the, the concerns that we have in the Ward Five and different wards. The original intent for these gift cards was to give out and pass out so they can be used locally. At local establishments for, for sales tax revenue purposes, correct?
Certainly, we would encourage the use of the gift cards locally.
So one of the questions that I have, if we are going to look at Visa gift cards, the prepaid gift cards. How do we geo fence those so they stay and the sales tax revenue stays in the city of Norman? So we, we capture that sales tax revenue?
In working with the Chamber of Commerce on the logistics of this, we're learning that we probably cannot do that. So more recently, we have been proposing that we might just buy gift cards from local businesses. When individuals go to get vaccinations, they would choose which business they want to get a gift card from while supplies last.
Okay. How, we're going to track the number of vaccinated, the new vaccinations for those individuals here. Um, so we show to the taxpayers. I mean, we're, we're asking for $500,000 in taxpayer funds. And they're going to want to see some results here. So the biggest concern is that overwhelmingly bipartisan. Opposition to using taxpayer funds to incentivize a program like this, uh, they're going to want assurances that, you know, we move the needle um higher. So. You know, looking at the, the anecdotal self-reporting vaccination statuses here in, in Norman, for example. We're hovering around 42% to like 47%, someplace in that area there. So what is an acceptable? Ratio reward to offering this money versus getting to the next percentage? Did you, is it, is it 50%? Are we shooting for 50%? And it may be a question for this.
Yeah, that's, that's not a financial question.
Got it. Thank you. So the, the initial conversations, uh, it was an amount not to exceed 500,000. Obviously, anything not. Uh, utilized in the incentive program just falls right back into the ARPA fund for council to appropriate for another purpose. Um, uh, as Mr. Francisco indicated, yeah, the goal, however many folks do get vaccinated does result in economic stimulus. In the local economy. Uh, and we do have a sign-up process. Our medical providers who would actually. Staff the vaccination sites have asked us to put together signup sheets so they know how many vaccines to take out of the refrigerator. Uh, so that we don't waste any. And I think our last count at the first anticipated vacs, uh, vaccination pod. To be held the weekend prior to Labor Day, uh, we were up to about 170 signups the, the, the last time it took a peek. So. We would have a record of the number of, of folks that come to each one of those vaccination pods. Uh, and I think the last conversation potentially between that, the weekend before Labor Day and ending sometime early in December.
And also the Health Department will keep track of raising, raises in our vaccination rate. And I would clarify, we have allocated the $25,000 and then the $475,000. That's the maximum. If we don't give away the gift cards, we're not going to spend that much. So it's.
Got it. I got, I have a follow-up question, um, really quick here. Um, so is the process done online? I haven't seen that process yet. Um, I actually got a call from a couple of single mothers that, that have a hard time getting off work. So. How would somebody go about to register for this if they have not been vaccinated?
Uh, Mr. Olson, can you give us the details of how our signup wizard works for this particular process? He's a man of many talents.
Yes, Jason Olson, Director of Parks and Recreation. We will put out a signup genius to the public. Um, that will go out in a press release and. Through social media channels and people can click on their pretty easy signup and. Uh, just kind of like everybody else is, is indicating where, you know, Parks and Recreation will be. Helping, which we have with many vaccinations and, and assisting in making sure that those gift cards go out to only the people that are newly vaccinated.
I'm sure that there has been some questions about, this seems like a rather small pod. It's our first one. I think we're going to have as many pods as the, the interest bears that we've done it before at 12th Avenue Rec Center. So this is just our first time trying it here. I want to get as many people vaccinated as possible and pump that money into local gift cards for local establishments. So. Just putting that out there in case that was a question someone had.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Um, that, some of my questions as well about who is eligible for the grand prize and who's eligible for the gift cards. That definitely clarifies that. I, I agree that we do need to show some results that there's been an increased. Uh, or an improvement that we can show people that we've, we spent this money and we've got something out of it. So I, I agree with that fully. And I think the intent here is to increase the rates of vaccination with the hope that we reduce. This virus in our community so we can get over this. I mean, I think everybody is sick of this. Absolutely sick of this. Like, I'm sick of the masks. I'm sick of all of it. I think we all are, but. We're trying to do the best we can with the information we have. And I think we're not mandating anybody to do anything. We're encouraging people to do, providing an incentive to do it. And ideally, that incentive. Will be going back into the local economy and helping give a little bit of an economic boost as well. And the other part is that, you know, this money is from the federal government. And I know there's a lot of debate and discussion that can go on about. Federal tax dollars and where those come from and who gets them, um, and what strings are attached to them as well. Always, that's always the biggest one. And so. Uh, I feel like this, these funds are, were being given to us by the federal government and this being part of the purpose for them. And it being an appropriate use, um, I think this is a pretty good path forward to try to get over this thing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
Um, a couple of questions. Has it been hashed out which businesses would be eligible for this? So we spread the wealth if we're going to do this around the city.
Um, in our conversations uh with Mr. Scott Martin at the chamber, uh, the chamber has volunteered to um communicate with. All the businesses here in Norman of seeking interest by those businesses who would make available those gift cards to be utilized at their facility. So. It would be open to all merchants in Norman city limits.
All right. And this was a question I just thought of Ms. Walker. Um. As this seems like a sweepstakes or a lottery or however you want to put it, for, uh, it seems like you're excluding a lot of people when you have all these other. Uh, times that always say no purchase necessary to enter into this. You're excluding people from being able to obtain a $25,000 cash prize. And are we even able legally to give out a $25,000 cash prize as it would be with lottery or sweepstakes? Is there any violation of federal or state law that we do this?
That's a great question. Um, this, there is state law about lotteries and cities abilities, ability to uh engage in a lottery or a raffle. The Chamber of Commerce in this case is partnering with us and they are handling that portion of it. We're providing the funding, but they're handling all of the logistics. Uh, because of the statute that only allows certain entities to run those.
What about the exclusion that it's not open to every resident, that they must go get a medical procedure to be able to be allowed into this?
I haven't found any regulations that, that would prohibit us from running it that way.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
So in theory, I, I like this to some degree. Um, in the last week since we talked about this. Uh, tomorrow night, I'm meeting with a union that wants to ask us for ARPA funds. I know that there's a large nonprofit in Norman. That is about to petition us for $750,000. So a lot of people have kind of come out of the woodworks and they want things. So this 500,000 is kind of giving me some heartburn today. So I was going to throw out. If my colleagues would be open to a friendly amendment to a different dollar amount. One much lower, I know I'm seeing some of those. I'm just putting that out there, that I would be open to a friendly amendment to. Lower it to 100,000. Because I know we have so many people that have come out of the woodwork to me that want some. I don't want to deny them, these nonprofits, um, I don't want to say who yet because I haven't officially done it. But I think that we. We had a list last week and we're giving 500,000 to the Virtue Center. I mean, that's great, but there's a lot of other people too, and these are very high-ticket items. And I think that we need to consider breaking this money down just a little bit further, since we did, and I, I'm good with the EOC 9.6 million. But we did give almost half of it away. I think we need to be a little more thoughtful and a little smaller in how we kind of divvy this up.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
Well, I, we talked about this in great length um last Tuesday and we all kind of went back and forth on the dollar amount. And I know that this is something that we talked about that um you guys wanted to do the $50 per shot. Because that would be the most incentivized way to do it. Um, and that was kind of a consensus that we all agreed on. So. I do understand what you're saying. Um, I also understand the frustration of some of my constituents about. Well, why do they, why are we paying someone to do what they should just do anyways? Um, we don't pay people to go get their school vaccinations. We don't pay people to. Get the flu shot. And this is a pandemic. We are in the middle of a pandemic. It was tapering off. It's coming back up. And we have to do something to help try to taper this back down. And so. If we can offer incentives and that encourages people to go get a vaccine that will help us in the long run, I, I'm in support of that. Um, do I think it's fair? No, but sometimes life isn't fair and sometimes we have to do things to make things work and we have to compromise. Um, I think that the $25,000 grand prize is an awesome thing that everyone that's vaccinated can participate in. So that leads to my question of, um, I know we kind of talked about this a little bit, but if somebody is already vaccinated. We said to avoid the coming in and all this stuff that we were going to do an online signup, and then if their name is drawn, they have to produce their vaccine record. Is that still the case? Or is it going to be as easy as I can go online and sign up?
To my knowledge, yes. Um, it should still be simple. The chamber is coordinating all of that, so I don't know the final details yet, but. That is still the idea is that a winner would be drawn and they would show proof of vaccination at that point.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it is going to be online because there's a lot of people that didn't even come here tonight because there is no mask mandate in place. So just to have a place that they feel safe. To enter something like that um would be awesome. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask is, um. I know we had mentioned we want as many people to host these vaccine clinics as we can. So. I had a church in my ward that reached out to me. Um, I have reached out to Mr. Olson about it, um, that wants to host a vaccine clinic. So could those. Other people in our community that would like to participate and host this, could their clinics also be included? Like the people that come there be included in these sweepstake drawings or these gift certificates?
I don't see why not. Mr. Olson, did you have an issue logistically with that?
Well, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable speaking on the behalf of people giving out shots, but we'll definitely talk to them. I think the main worry. Um, especially with talking with Norman Regional, which is, we have used for our large clinic on Irving's side, is just making sure that we have. Enough people and resources for their staff to show up and make sure that we don't waste any vaccine if they come out there with numbers that don't match up. But uh, we'll definitely take suggestions and can run it to. The people who are going to be running the clinics, I mean, we're just kind of at, at the will of the, you know, the Health Department or Norman Regional or somebody like that to kind of run the clinics.
Well, I want to take a moment to say thank you to both of those agencies because I've had several churches reach out to me and they haven't hesitated to help set it up. So that wasn't entirely my concern because they've done outstanding job so far. But I think your question was more, will that participate in this endeavor?
Correct. Can, can any businesses that would like to host a vaccine clinic, can they participate or allow their people that are coming to get vaccinated to participate in this?
Yeah, the, oh, once again, I, I can't speak on behalf of the people that, that will be putting on the clinic, but we can definitely. Work with those agencies to try to set something up. The, um. You know, it's kind of hard for me to speak for State Department of Health or Norman Regional. I, I don't know where, if they would necessarily agree to. Set up 100 different clinics at 100 different places.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Gotcha. Okay.
And this is an excellent opportunity to remind employers that with this clinic, you could give your employees time off work. To make sure that they get signed up and can participate that way as well.
Yeah, and to go, kind of go on that note, we are trying to put it a little bit later in the evening where people can come by and get shots after work. It's three to seven, Westwood Tennis Center is where we're planning on doing it.
Next Tuesday, August 31st. Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Um, okay, that just raised a couple of other questions that I don't even have on my list. So. Um, so if there are um churches or other organizations or businesses that want to encourage participation. I think what I've heard so far is this is just the first of multiple opportunities. So if, um. If we have, you know, people reaching out with our ward like Councilmember Studley, who is the best person for them to contact? Because maybe if you have multiple people willing to, or multiple organizations willing to host, that they might be able to. You know, find some common ground and combine at a location, you know, to have a larger, larger turnout. Um, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. Who, who would they contact?
I don't mind them contacting Parks and Recreation. Like I said, we've, we've been the ones that set up the, the clinic so far. I think we've done three or four of them. Uh, to kind of go a little bit farther into answering some of your questions, we are working currently, the Parks and Recreation Department of the City. Is working with Norman Regional on a community collaboration grant where, uh, I believe there's about 10 cities around the country that got selected, selected for it. And it's this, um. Basically where a hospital has a great relationship with an entity like a city Boys and Girls Club or YMCA. Obviously, we have a great relationship with Norman Regional. And I think if, if, if we get together and have. Basically, we can show them that we can put together a clinic where they can, it's worth their while where we're not having, you know, a dozen people kind of coming out there and. And wasting a lot of resources. If we can get clinics where we have 100, a couple hundred people out there where it's getting our, a good bang for the buck. That I think we'll be able to put it together. I mean, we have great partners around Norman and every time we ask Norman Regional for something, they are. They go out of their way to try to make that happen. So I think it's very possible.
So the, the two entities that will be administering the vaccines are Norman Regional Health System and the Cleveland County Health Department.
Correct. That's, as far, as far as I know right now, yes. Those are the, are two interested partners.
Okay. So I know, um, when we were making decisions about CARES Act money, we did invest some CARES Act money in doing outreach. To underrepresented communities and, you know, tried to reach out to these other locations. So I just would encourage. Us to, you know, make sure that we're finding uh locations that might be more accessible to people that maybe we haven't thought of yet. That's, that's really what I'm trying to figure out. So.
100% agree.
Okay. Um, so, um, I think, you know, based on our previous discussion. Um, one of the things that we're learning is the mo, one of the most powerful steps we can take as a community is to increase the percentage of people who are vaccinated. And so that, that's one of the primary goals of doing an incentive program like this, but it also does serve a dual purpose. Um, at least from my understanding of um, uh. An economic boost to our local businesses who have really struggled through the pandemic and are also trying to recover, which is another. Um, another category of what we're trying to accomplish while using our ARPA funds. So. In this particular instance, we're, we're addressing two different, two different purposes of, um, you know, uh, increased vaccination rate and also. Um, encouraging recovery with our local businesses. of, um, you know, uh, increased vaccination rate and also encouraging recovery with our local businesses. So, um, what I, what I wanted to make sure that we all understand as a community is the chamber is coordinating this, but you do not have to be a chamber member to participate as a business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, um, I think, uh, City Manager Pyle just said, uh, made the statement, you know, that all businesses could participate, but I, I, it is really important to me that we are, um, limiting it to our local businesses. Okay, Norman businesses. Okay. Well, so, is Target a Norman business?
Target is a Norman business.
Okay. So, that's not necessarily a local business.
Uh, happy to take direction on definition of local.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's really what I'm trying to tease out here because, um, my understanding was that we were going to specifically target businesses that have a home in Norman that are, are mom and pop places that are struggling.
One of, what I had understood was it was locally owned. So, you may have a chain, but it's a franchisee, so it's still a Normanite that owns it.
Okay.
So, that was what I had discussed with, uh, Mr. Martin at the chamber. But I do understand, the, the counterargument is sales tax dollars or sales tax dollars, but I under, also understand it was the intent of this council to put that money into small businesses and help them recover.
Yeah.
So, I fully support that as well.
Okay. Just want to make sure. And then, um, I guess the, just the final comment was, um, wha, what we're also understanding, people who have been reluctant to get a vaccine and have waited for a while, um, it's not because they don't want to, but they have continued to need additional information. So, feedback that we got earlier today in another meeting is that we're seeing an increased number of people who are much more comfortable now, starting to consider getting vaccinated because the Pfizer vaccine in particular has full FDA approval now. And so, some people who have been reluctant have been waiting for that. So, I think the timing of all of this is, is, uh, is good. So, my main thing is that we really are intentional about supporting small local businesses in Norman.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler.
Uh, yeah, I had the same questions about, um, what we were kind of recognizing as a local business that Councilmember Hall kind of brought up. Um, just want to kind of reiterate, like, while I understand that we have, um, some national businesses in Norman, my concern would be for something like Target. Um, if you get a gift card for that, that's not necessarily going to go into our Target store. That could go online. I mean, that would be, you know, sales tax dollars that would, we would get here, but, um, they could go and use that somewhere else in another community as well because they are located other places. And so, I just would hope that, you know, our intent was for those, that money to be infused back here in Norman in local businesses. Um, so, thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Lynn.
Just a quick reading of the, the lottery laws I sit here right now. I would, I would say that this is not even legal, even in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, that those funds that come from the Chamber of Commerce must be donated by a merchant. The city is not a merchant, and it not being open to everybody would exclude it even further. I think that this has not been fully vetted in this $25,000 cash prize. And I'm pretty sure that the, the sentiment from the, from the chamber would be the same, that this has not been fully vetted. So, I don't see how we can move forth with this without some details and without some of these ideas hashed out. Because right now, my reading of it, I know I'm not the city attorney, but I am attorney. It would seem like it is illegal unless it is a merchant that is donating these funds, not tax dollars that are coming in through this program.
Thank you. Any questions, any other further questions from council regarding this item? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Uh, the first speaker, I'm sorry, the first speaker is Catherine Cox.
Thank you, council. My name is Kathy Cox. I am in Ward One. I am a registered nurse. I work with seniors, helping them age in place in their own homes. I have worked throughout the pandemic. When it came time for my turn, I got the shot. I also helped clinics at my office for my clients and caregivers to get as many people vaccinated as possible. I have worked with as many people as possible to educate them, to control them, and probably many times they thought I was harassing them to go get the shot. The one thing that I have a concern about is the hourly workers. I am a professional. I was able to take off work to get the shot. I had side effects. I was able to get paid. But I have family members who make $12 an hour. Their concern is their time to take off to get the shot. A $50 gift card to a local business is not going to help them. I would like you guys to maybe think about possibly helping our small businesses, be able to reimburse them for some sick time to get the shot and some time off. And I think that might be something that would be more useful. If it is a legal problem, it would also be legal. I know that there are people who will not get the shot, and that is their choice. I think what we have to do is figure out the people that can be convinced, what would take for them to get the shot. Would it be a $50 gift card? Would it be a possibility of being able to have some sick time or something like that? When I first saw the 500,000, half a million dollar number, my eyes popped out. I really thought it was $50,000 of incentives. So, that is just something that I would like for you guys to consider because I do want people to get the shot, but I want us to do it so that we do help those vulnerable populations that at this point have not seen a way to get the shot. And to also not forget that are there are homebound patients that I know that are still waiting for someone to come and give them a shot. And we need to be able to have a way for them to either call. They're probably not going to be able to get online to be able to get the shot if they want to get it. Because we need to be able to get vaccines to people who do want them. And I don't know if $50 will necessarily do that for those who don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jesse Vaughn.
Thank you. Hallelujah. Uh, forgive me if I, while I'm talking, I pray in tongues a little bit. I'm an apostle. My name is Jesse Vaughn. I'm apostle of Church, uh, the 11th Hour. The Lord had me come down here. It's interesting, sir, uh, you, sir, the two with the mask on. Uh, I, I honestly believe you're right. It's not legal. You would all, the Lord sent me here to warn y'all, even the ones that aren't right with Him, that if you go through with this, you'll all be guilty of coercion. Let me read you the criminal definition of coercion. A person is guilty of criminal coercion if the purpose to unlawfully restrict another's freedom, freedom, another's freedom of action to his or her detriment. Now, I know y'all are all smart. You can see that there's 13,000 deaths on VAERS. Now, wh- whether those, we don't know those people. I don't know none of them. Maybe some of y'all do. But that proves that some of these, some people, even the CDC that y'all claim is so great, says that some folks are dying, and y'all are fixing to coerce the city of Norman to come take that chance at the dance. And I'm telling you, the Lord is not all right with that. You know I know the Lord's not all right with that? Psalms 12:5 says, "For the cause of the oppressed and the groaning and the needy, I will now arise." It says, Proverbs 24:11 says, "Hold back those staggering towards slaughter." So, you want to get everybody vaccinated because you care so much? You had two doctors talk to us, which was coercion. That was coercion. And if you listened, the first doctor you had, Dr. Dale Brassler, he said, at his, quoting him, he says, last statement was, "Well, I can't speak to the Norman situation." So, he, this fax, this, this, am I the only person with a brain in here? At the end, he said, "I don't know nothing about Norman." Which one of y'all, I want to know, was I, the idea to get someone who doesn't know anything about Norman to speak at the Norman City Council? If you, it was you, you should be ashamed of yourself, but the Lord has mercy on you. I know you're counting my three minutes. I got 40 seconds. Well, Oklahoma laws, coercion's bad. Nuremberg Code Number One says coercion's bad. So, you think that y'all can, when a government does coercion, it's called fascism. When the government says the business can be authoritative, it's called fascism. And so, right now, in the name of Jesus, I break the spirit of fascism. I break the spirit of coercion off this place, and I break the Jezebel spirit off the City of Norman City Council right now by the blood of Yeshua of Nazareth. And I shut the door to you, Mayor Clark, and I lock it with the keys of David.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Cody, Cody Giles.
Here's the thing. I came here tonight because, like, for this specific thing, ready to fully endorse it. And honestly, like, I want to because I want as many people vaccinated as possible because scientifically it works. And I weirdly, weirdly, weirdly side with, uh, Councilmember Lynn about the legal side of this. Um, because if it is illegal, we probably shouldn't do it. Um, because God knows we don't need more frivolous lawsuits coming through the city. Uh, so, anyway, um, so we should probably check that out for sure. Um, I, I did have a concern with the chamber, with it being the chamber, because a lot of their messaging does go out to just the members of the chamber. I think that could become problematic. Um, I think there's a lot of, a lot more questions to this than we have answers. While I think it's, in its spirit is a great idea, and I think that, um, you know, there are some people that you could give $10,000 to and they would still wouldn't get it, uh, which is insane. But, um, but I get it. Um, I think it's a great idea to incentivize it in some way. I don't know that we have this fleshed out completely yet. Um, I think in the spirit of it, I fully support it. Um, but again, uh, I think that there are a lot of questions to it, and I think that we should move forward with this in some degree, um, but definitely figuring out. And I think that, you know, it, it takes time. I think the council here is stalled on smaller things. So, um, I think it may be worth taking another look at and figuring out exactly what this looks like. But I do think moving forward with it in some degree is a great idea. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'm from Ward Two. I forgot to say that the, like, first time or this time. I do live in Norman. I do love this town, and I know a lot of people may not like me. That's fine. But I love me too. But I just want to say, you know, thank you for all the work that you do. I think this is a good idea in some degree, um, and I hope that we get there at some point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Daniel Monson.
Dan Monson with, uh, Ward Six. So, I've done a little research on incentivizing COVID vaccines. And, uh, West Virginia gave $100 to everyone who got a vaccine. And so, that was either a gift card or a savings bond. And their vaccine, uh, rate right now is lower than the state of Oklahoma's. Ohio, um, also did a incentive. They did $1 million lotteries, five weeks in a row. $5 million. Their vaccine percentage is only 5% higher than Oklahoma's. Let me say that again. $5 million in incentives, $1 million for five consecutive weeks. And their total vaccine, uh, percentage is 5% higher than Oklahoma's. I would have expected that number to be like 20% or 25%. And because of that, this is a no for me. Um, I would encourage you to vote no, uh, on this because other states have incentivized. They just haven't gotten the results that they needed. What I would like to see this, uh, funding to go to would be to pay for, uh, either overtime or salaries for, uh, first responders. And what would happen then is that money would go back to the general fund. And money that is in the general fund is going to be significantly easier to use than the American Re, uh, Recovery and Reinvestment Act, uh, funds. If this does get approved tonight, this is what I would ask. Um, last year, there was businesses in Norman that submitted a, uh, grant application for $10,000. Some businesses received $10,000. Some did not. If you're going to do gift cards, you should do it to the businesses that did not receive that $10,000. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Maggie Logue.
I forgot to tell you, I'm from Ward Five. Forgot to tell you that earlier. Um, I am opposed to spending any money at all to incentivize the vaccines. Um, this money is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, which was passed into law March of this year by Biden. It's a $1.9 trillion package intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, including the public health and economic impacts. We have lived with coronaviruses since they were discovered in the early 60s. The strain right now is the seventh coronavirus that has infected humans, and we've never eradicated any of them, any of the previous six, and nor have we successfully developed a vaccine. And this vaccine is also not successful. People that are fully vaccinated are still getting COVID, and they're still spreading it. I, again, if you want to promote something and pay and reward people, you need to start promoting health. You need to promote exercise, weight loss, fresh air, smoking sensation. You know, decreased alcohol consumption, decreased weed smoking or gummies. You know, get the immune system of the people in Norman built up instead of trying to coerce people into taking a vaccine that really is not successful. And it really shouldn't even be called a vaccine because it does not prevent disease. Something that, um, you probably don't want to hear, but it's real important, is that the people that aren't vaccinated at this point don't want to be. That's our choice, our decision. You paying people money to try to get them to come out and get a vaccine isn't going to work. And the guy before me just stated two examples. I'm sure there's probably more. So, the people that are vaccinated, that are really pushing for them, I think it's great. I don't have a problem with anybody getting vaccinated. I don't have a problem with anybody wearing a mask. But I don't think you're going to convince anybody. It hasn't been a matter of not being available because there's been pods all over the place for people to get vaccinated. This is a personal choice. It's a health choice. It's not something that you can, you know, here, come get a shot and we're going to give you a prize. I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next speaker is, sorry, Courtney Lower, Lauer?
Good evening. I'm Courtney Lower. I am with Ward Five. Um, a lot of the concerns and questions that I had, um, have already been addressed with Maggie. Um, a lot of the concerns and questions that I had, um, have already been addressed with making sure this goes to local businesses, things like that. Um, another thing that is kind of a concern is the liability that, if there is any, I don't know what legally, um, if there's any liability to the city of Norman to incentivize these people. If they do get sick, if they do die, if they have some kind of reaction that permanently disables them, how are they going to live like that? You know, and I understand we always take those risks. But that is why I haven't gotten it, or a lot of my family members haven't, because there are adverse reactions that I have personally seen, that need to be taken accounted for. I understand some people still want it and can't, and haven't been able to get it. If they want it, power to them. Let's put this money towards sending people to them to get it. You know, we had a nurse step up here and say that she takes care of seniors that want that. And if they want it, power to them. They should have that. But I don't think we should be paying people $25 to get a vaccine that, or a shot, um, that could change their lives. And they don't, they don't know those risks. Like I said, everything else is pretty well addressed. Um, I want to stay local. I don't think it needs to be $500,000. So thank you for addressing that, Councilmember Foreman. But there's a lot more risks. It shouldn't be incentivized, but it should be offered, and it should be available. And you couldn't pay me $10,000 to get it, I'm sorry. But we need to take care of our community, and I think just by servicing them is what we can do for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Trenton Dunn? Trenton Dunn is the next speaker. Okay. Um, Alex Torvi? Or, excuse me, Jesse Vaughn, and then Alex. Okay, Alex Torvi.
Torvi, Ward Six. I can see that this has been an arduous process trying to go through this. But I think for me, I'm not going to speak about pro-vaccine or, um, anti-vaccine, but I do have a, a concern about this, and, and I think it's best if I give it in an example, to try to express my concern. What if, uh, we have a resident that wants to take advantage of this program and is not truthful when he goes to one of these pods or, or the Cleveland County to get a shot? And he's already had the third booster shot? And he gets a vaccine that mixes with a different kind of vaccine, and it causes him issues or even kills him? That's my concern with this, and I think we need to rethink, rethink this, just because of that safety issue. And also, the liability issue, is there, will there be liability on the city of Norman if something like that happens, when someone tries to take advantage of something like this? And for me, $50 ain't worth taking a chance on taking advantage of something like this, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Frank Kump?
Hello, I'm Frank Kump, Ward Two. I'm opposed to this mandate, I'm sorry, not mandate, but recommendation. I have a question for the council members. Do you plan to earmark any of this money for anything other than gift cards? For example, to fund mobile inoculation teams coming house to house? I hope not. But, uh, I'd like an answer for that. I'm putting it out there. Does anybody want to answer that? Is it just for gift cards? Is it just exactly for gift cards or anything else?
This is a time for comments, but we'd be happy to chat with you after the council meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, I'm putting it out there for public discussion, and, and again, uh, but it's interesting, though, that, again, follow the money. It seems like City Council is more concerned about generating tax revenue on the back of this thing. But again, you know, it's part of the thing, they're worried about getting shots in people, which costs the government thousands of dollars when they could treat them with simple medicines for less than a dollar. But, uh, okay, gotcha. It's interesting, and follow the money. But, uh, last comment I'd like to have, make is, City Council members, you know, trying to convince people to get a shot, yet you talk down to people. You try to say that they're, imply that they're dumb, or that they're not doing the right thing, because they have questions or reservations about getting the shot, for either health reasons or moral reasons. For example, they've used fetal parts in the shots. So, you know, there's moral issues here, if the people may want to refuse getting a shot. Yet, I hear City Council people up here making statements, accusatory statements to people that are hesitant, and trying to, like, blame or accusing people. If you want to get a shot, get the shot. Wear a mask, have at it. Don't stop me. Don't impose that on me. But again, it's interesting, you're concerned that I haven't gotten a shot. But if you've gotten a shot, you should have immunity. You shouldn't care if I've had this shot. You're wearing a mask and protect yourself. You shouldn't care if I'm wearing a mask. You're protecting yourself. I'll take care of myself, thank you very much, and my family. We'll make our decisions, okay, and our children, okay? Yet, again, I'm, I'm hearing over and over how that we're supposedly bad people if we're not taking the shot, okay? Or that, you know, you're afraid that you're going to catch it, even though you've had the vaccine. I thought vaccines give you immunity. Sure seems like it's not, and seems like they've sold us a bag of goods. You know, these things aren't effective. Yet you guys are promoting shots that are not effective, and we need to give people more shots, and more shots. You're never going to get rid of flus. They haven't got rid of influenza, common flu bug, common cold Y, because they're flu, not bacteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Camp? Dana Miller? Or Millen, sorry. Gary Barstow?
Council Mayor, Gary Barstow, Ward Eight. I'm really surprised I didn't get gavelled the last time I was up here, because I was addressing item 23, whenever we were skipping to 24, so I'm really surprised I didn't get gavelled last time. But, um, we're going to use $500,000 of this ARPA money to incentivize the usage, again, as I mentioned earlier, a drug that is not FDA-approved. Monoclonal antibody infusion is a treatment that is approved. If you can incentivize something, incentivize something that we know works, and we know that it's been approved, and the people that have undergone that are less likely for reinfection than people that have been vaccinated. That's a fact. You can even ask the two doctors that came in about that. Uh, Mr. Munn mentioned facts about the failure of financial incentives. I believe that, that monies should go to the businesses that have been struggling because of your draconian shutdowns. That's what we need to incentivize. And the no gift cards for those who are proactive and already got jabbed? I know we already addressed that a few minutes ago, but that seems like discrimination against me. I mean, you know, if you already got the vaccination, why don't you get a card too? Well, hey, I'll tell you what I'll do, like Mr. Torvi did, and I'll get reinjected again, so that I can get that $50 card, right? Or wait a minute, I've already got the first injection, let me wait and see what Mayor Clark and the council votes as to whether I'm going to be eligible for 50 grand. So I think I'll postpone my second injection to see what they're going to do, okay? Um, I firmly agree with what Councilmember Lynn had mentioned about the legalities of this, uh, because I have run lotteries before, and I happen to know that you're, you don't want to do this, you really don't want to do this. But let's talk about, uh, FDA approval and the doctor's comments. As much as I appreciated the zeal from the one speaker, he made a very valid point. The last thing that Braxler said was, "I don't know what is going on with Norman." Kind of valid. Um, but let's talk about Dr. Boyd. He mentioned the vaccines received FDA approval. That's a direct quote of what he said. Not entirely, y'all. The FDA approved of only the Pfizer. This is evidence of doctors not being completely as transparent as ideologues claim. Even when those ideologues enact laws and statutes, they're basing it on incomplete or inaccurate information from so-called experts who themselves may also be the ideologues. Is it any coincidence that the director of the FDA is also on the Pfizer's board of directors, and that's the only one that's been approved of? Policy needs to stop being dictated by ideological people that are basing their information on inaccurate or incomplete information. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that... Are there any final comments for council? And before, I'll lead real quick, just with the clarification. Dr. Braxler was referring to the capacity at Norman Regional. He is the OU Chief COVID Officer. He very much knows what's going on in the city of Norman. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Um, I would note that the current FDA director is not on the board of Pfizer. The prior one, that was appointed by President Trump, is on the board of Pfizer, Scott Gottlieb. Not someone I like very much, and I have a lot of reservations about the FDA myself for other reasons. But I would just clarify that, um, currently. So for clarification to tonight, $500,000 for this. So in the resolution, it doesn't say, it doesn't outline how we're actually going to use it. It doesn't say $25,000 for a grand prize. It doesn't say gift cards. Um, it just says we're appropriating $500,000, uh, to incentivize this. So are we just appropriating funding for a program we might come up with? Or are we setting in stone tonight that we're doing a 25? Because I, I agree about the legal questions. I'd like to know, uh, that before we say we're going to do that. But, uh, the way I understand that what we're voting on tonight is just an appropriation of funding that could be used for anything, any program to incentivize vaccinations.
Mr. Francisco, could you help explain when we appropriate money, what happens with that, and what happens if we don't spend it?
The council, as the governing body for the city of Norman, is the only authorized body to appropriate funds. When you appropriate funds, you appropriate them and allocate them for some purpose. And once they have been appropriated, within the guidelines and the purposes the council has given, the details can be worked out under the purview of the city manager. So, so yes, in the proposed case that we're talking about here, council would appropriate, uh, $500,000 to incentivize vaccinations against COVID-19. City manager go work out the details. So whether that is through the Chamber of Commerce or whomever, council's action is to appropriate the funds.
And quick question on that, what happens if we don't spend the $500,000 that we have allocated for a vaccine incentive program?
It would remain appropriated for that purpose, and would either go unspent, or council could appropriate it for some other purpose.
So once we've decided, let's say we spend $200,000 of it, and then we decide, okay, we're done, we're moving on, we just reallocate the three, the remaining $300,000 to a different purpose. It doesn't just disappear, we didn't lose it.
No, ma'am, it would go to fund balance or be re-appropriated for some other purpose.
Thank you.
Okay, and so as a follow-up, if we approve this budget allocation tonight, city manager pile is going to come back to council with, this is what we should do, and then we're going to decide? Or how are we going to go about it from here?
The conversations council had a study session. Um, the $500,000 was an amount not to exceed for an incentive program that included two key components. A $25,000 lottery raffle, however it's described, uh, to recognize those who have already been vaccinated. Um, and then gift cards, and that conversation started out $10 per gift card, and went up to $50 gift card, uh, when you go in to get your first shot and your second shot, as long as those cards existed. Um, the intent was to start the program on the weekend before Labor Day, which did not provide us with another council meeting, uh, between now and then. So staff's been working on a daily basis with our healthcare providers who would actually provide the vaccinations, and our facilities folks who will provide the space at the, uh, Westwood Tennis Complex for people to come in and get vaccinated, putting together the signup software. Uh, it's been a busy, busy effort on staff's part to be able to, uh, take full advantage of a relatively short runway, uh, to get the program up and running by the Labor Day weekend. So we wouldn't bring it back to council. What we would do is make sure we hit your targets, amount not to exceed, gift cards for the first shot, gift cards for the second shot, as long as the gift cards held out, and that $25,000, uh, opportunity for people previously vaccinated.
Okay, so I like the idea of, if we're doing gift cards, that they are, would be for maybe businesses that didn't get in on the $10,000. That's, I think, a good idea. But, uh, the legal question about the lottery thing, is that something we can, do we need to follow up on that before we give the go-ahead with that, or?
I'll mention that we got the idea from Anna Darko, who's done this already, so...
Sure, sure, but, you know...
I'd be happy to answer that. Um, yes, we have looked at this. Yes, we have researched it. I'm not convinced that, uh, this would even technically meet the definition of lottery under the statute. Uh, to be safe, though, we, we did read through that statute, knowing that, you know, years ago, even nonprofits couldn't do raffles, and that statute changed, uh, to allow some of them. And so in subsection 4A, it talks about a qualified organization who can run one of these events. A qualified organization is any agency that has a 501(c) taxes-ined organization. The chamber is one of those. They would run this, um, with voluntary contributions. The city, under the federal authorization for the ARPA funds, would be making that voluntary contribution.
Okay, those are the clarifying questions I had right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
So I will not be voting in favor of this tonight, um, not out of fear of my Jezebel spirit, but because I do think that it is too much money that's being allocated for this, when I think we have greater needs in the city of Norman than this right now. And like you said, ma'am, I do believe that people who want to get vaccinated have been vaccinated, and I don't think this is going to cause a lot of traction, $500,000 worth, and I think we can appropriate that money to something better.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello?
Well, she kind of set it from here. It's, uh, it's odd that I agree with you on this. We can spend the money someplace else, and those that will get the vaccination will get the vaccination. You know, if my question was, uh, to Mrs. Walker, and I think she kind of answered it, you know, are we in jeopardy of being sued by someone who didn't get the vaccination and wants to participate in this, this lottery? I mean, you, you read it. Um, I just want to hear from you, you know. I know it's not definitive, but, um, if someone wants to challenge us who didn't get the vaccination, but he wants to partake, are we in jeopardy of being sued?
I would never say we're never in jeopardy of being sued, because people can sue for all kinds of reasons. But I will say, reading through the lottery statutes, uh, if those were deemed to apply, I don't see anything in here that would require us to allow everyone to participate, even if they don't get a shot.
I feel that, um, thank you, ma'am. This was a good idea. The intent was, uh, to get people, uh, to be aware of the severity of getting shot or not getting shot. Either way, um, you know, I have natural immunity. I've not been sick. I've been around thousands of people since July, June of last year. And, um, I would not advocate that anybody come and, uh, get a vaccination to win a gift card. Um, that's just not in my purview, and I would never force anyone or advise anyone to do that. And I do believe that this money can be used more effectively in the community for other projects. And, um, for that reason, I'm going to vote no. I just don't see this going anywhere. I see, I see a program that's not fully vetted yet with, uh, a lot of question marks. And, um, I'd like to, to see it vetted, but, um, right now, I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
I'd say that the statute that this falls under actually is Crimes and Punishment. It's Title 21 of the Oklahoma State Statutes. It's 21 statute, statute, Title 21, statute 21, 105-1. And that comes, when it mentions the, the Chamber of Commerce, that's in, uh, A2. And it says that there has to be a merchant that produces this money, or, or gift or whatnot to the Chamber of Commerce. We are not a merchant. We are not qualified to do this. This is federal tax money. I do think that this will be highly illegal. I have a different opinion on this. Also, I have not heard, this is all over the map, I've heard from both sides. I've not heard any side approved. There's the one side that says, "Hey, why are you incentivizing people to do the right thing? We think you're wasting our money." If they wanted the vaccine, or they should go get it, there's been plenty of opportunity to have that. And then there's the other side that said, "Hey, we don't want the vaccine. Why are you wasting our money?" So I have... So I haven't heard anything good from any citizen on any side that wants this. It is, everybody seems opposed to this. Even people that seem agreed to me, they, they might think it's a good idea, but just not in the way that we have it right now. I definitely think that this needs more fleshing out, for sure. And I think that we need to get an opinion whether it is legal or not, not just from the city attorney. Maybe if we approach the AG and say, hey, here's this program. And if Anna Darko did it, that doesn't mean it was legal. So right now, I'd make a motion to table this and bring it back after it being fleshed out a little bit more, if that's what we're doing. But we have too many unanswered questions right now. And I can't, I can't support it as is. I'm not saying that I couldn't ever support it. Surprise, surprise, surprise. Many of you might know, might not know. I've been vaccinated. That probably surprises a lot of people. I'm not against it. I've been, had so much stuff injected in my arm through the military. I was like, meh, why not? What's this one more thing? It, it was nothing to me, but I understand everybody's concerns. And there've been free vaccines for months and months. I don't see how this is going to get anybody else like, oh, man, this is what I've been waiting on to go get this thing that I'm totally opposed to. You've had the opportunity. I just don't think it is wise. We have so many things that we could spend money on, the first responder stuff. We don't have contracts with our fire and police right now. And we're going to spend $500,000 to incentivize people to go get something that apparently they do not want, or they would have got it. So once again, I make a motion to table this.
Second. Okay. The motion on the floor is to table this issue. Would you like to add a date certain?
It, I think you said September 14th. That'd be good for that date.
The September 14th. Another part of the first component of the incentive program was tickets to the OU opener, which we'll have since passed. So just keep that in mind. I'm sure that's not the end-all, be-all, but wanted to clarify that. Okay. Are there any questions from council regarding the motion to table? This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the motion to table. Come on up, sir.
Must agree with the decision to table it. It certainly needs more investigation on the legality of the lottery component of this. So I, I agree. I think it's a good decision, you know, wait, make sure, you know, all your ducks in a row that, you know, you don't do anything that's against the law. I think it's smart, you know, and why rush it? I mean, people are still getting the shot. It's available. I mean, I walk around town and you see signs, hey, it's available here at the Walgreens, Walmart, CVS Pharmacy, everywhere you go. Hey, come in, walk in or make an online appointment. Go to gov, shot.gov or whatever it is. So, you know, it's available. So I don't see any harm tabling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Barstow, Word 8. I do want to encourage the council to pass the motion to table. We talked about the $500,000. We talked about the fact, Mr. Holman himself even mentioned the fact that the $500,000, there's nothing in there that says that it's going to go to a lottery. There's nothing in here that says it's going to go to anything. There's no clear-cut description as to how this $500,000 is to be spent. And you guys are going to vote again on a large amount of money without a clear-cut plan as to how it's going to be spent. So I think it's a great idea for everybody to table this. And whenever you come up with this desire to want to spend our money again, please tell us specifically how you plan on spending it, instead of just, oh, we're going to appropriate $500,000 to incentivize COVID-19 vaccinations. Good job.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, this is an opportunity for the council to make final comments regarding the motion to table. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I did, when I was looking over the resolution again, what was missing was the description of gift cards. So I misspoke on that. It does say lottery 25,000. And that kind of, because it is written in there, gives me some pause that I didn't have before, just because of the questions raised about whether we can do it or not. So I'm a little hesitant to pass this tonight with that written in there and then find out that we maybe can't do it. And I think just having a little bit more time to flesh out some of those details might be good. Some of those questions I didn't think of last week when we were meeting. So, so that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Excuse me. Yeah, I was looking at the resolution as well, and it, it does specify 25,000 in the resolution. It does specify funds for gift certificates. I still am in support in the spirit of all of this and to continue to send the message to our community that the most powerful thing anybody can do for themselves and for everyone else is to get vaccinated. But I also think that we've raised enough questions that there's no reason in my mind why we can't give this a little bit more deliberation and get some of these questions and maybe some of the details worked out. So I'm happy to support the postponement.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler.
Yeah, I was in the queue to speak before councilmember Lynn made the motion to postpone this. But what I would have said, and, you know, I'm in favor of this kind of being tabled for the moment because I think we have raised enough questions tonight. And as much as it pains me to say that, I am in full kind of support of a program like this and incentivizing and, and, you know, encouraging people to get vaccinated. But I think that there just are too many questions about how exactly this money is going to be appropriated. I think some people brought some, you know, important ideas that we could think on to, you know, use this money in a slightly different manner than we had considered before. And so I think taking this back and reworking this a bit, I think, is the smart decision. So I'm in, I'm in favor of tabling this for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
I was going to say, as well, with all the questions raised and some of the comments that you guys made, one lady talked about bringing it to somebody's home. And I didn't even, you know, that's a really great use of this money. We do have people that want to get this shot. And I don't know if we have mobile vaccine units that do go to houses, but if not, that might be something that we could consider. But there are a lot of things up in the air with this. So I will agree that we should table it. However, I'm also in agreements with councilmember Hall that this is something that I like the spirit of it, the idea of it. And we, we're trying to think creatively outside of the box and find ways that we can encourage more people to get vaccinated in our community. I know that this shot does not cure COVID, just like the flu shot does not cure the flu. But I do have this little thing that I just want to read. So there are 14 diseases that have been controlled with some form of a vaccine or shot. Tetanus, the flu, hepatitis A, hepatitis B, rubella, HIB, measles, whooping cough, pneumococcal disease, rotavirus, mumps, chickenpox, and eptera. Why can't we make COVID be the 15th vaccine? We send our kids to schools getting vaccinated. There is proof, like one person said, that COVID's been around for a while. We've been trying to make a vaccine. It's not like they just came up with this overnight. This has been in the works, in the progress for years. They've been trying to come up with a vaccine for this. So it's not a brand-new vaccine that just got thrown into the market. But I think doing a little bit more research is a good idea. I do trust in our city attorney, though, and her ability and what she has told us. And if other states have done this, I don't see why it would be any different for our state. And I just want to apologize to our city staff that have worked so hard to get some of these events in place and motion. And hopefully, we can move forward with something in the future that can get these pods out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief King, can I invite you in here to explain the mobile vaccination delivery that our fire department has been doing?
Yes, Mayor Travis King, Fire Chief, Fire Department. Mobile vaccine unit with the fire department may be not quite what we're doing. We, our staff, we've had folks contact the fire administration who were homebound, shut-in type folks who were really at the height of the, of last year when things were really, you know, a lot of cases in the community were afraid to get out, couldn't get out, elderly that were very concerned about getting out, getting in crowds to get the, to get the vaccine. And so our medical folks worked with county to get the vaccine to those folks and administer to, administer to it at their residence. So we don't specifically have a unit where we're going out doing that or going door-to-door, so to speak. But if folks contact the fire department requesting help, we do what we can to get them the assistance they're requesting.
There you go. Don't need internet for that. So there is a system in place. We've done it before. So thank you to the Norman Fire Department and the Cleveland County Health Department for making that happen. Okay. The one thing, I guess two things I will add. Staff did work really hard this past week based on our feedback that we gave them last week. But I do agree, we, we don't want to rush it. We want it to be as successful as possible. That's why it's a smaller pod to begin with. But that's looking like we're going to postpone that. So the final thing I will say is you keep questioning illegality. We have an attorney. She's right here. She did go to law school, and she's the immediate past president for the Oklahoma Municipal Attorneys Association. So I personally, also as an attorney, find it very offensive when she's right here and we're saying we need a legal opinion. So please be mindful of that. Your staff is very educated and works incredibly hard, and I think they deserve our respect, given how much work that they do for us. So the motion on the floor is to table the vaccine incentive program until a date certain of September 14th.
All votes. To postpone the item until September 14th passes unanimously.
All right. We're on to item 24, Resolution 2122-35, appropriating $100,000 of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 entitlement funds from the Special Grants Fund balance to be used for the furtherance of the Norman Arts Council sub-grant programs. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Lynn.
I did have some questions on this one. And just for clarification, I did talk to Mr. Francisco today, and I did ask him some questions on this. And I was wondering, I'll ask him those same questions, just for the benefit of the public that were wondering about these 100,000, this 100,000. Mr. Francisco, this does come just out of the room and sales tax.
Room tax, yes, sir.
Or the, yeah, the motel tax, hotel tax.
Yes, sir.
And with that, what is generally their, what, what they receive in a year, year-to-year basis from that?
On a, on a routine basis, the Arts Council usually gets about $440,000 from the city of Norman's room tax. Now, that has been reduced in the last year, mostly due to the COVID's effect on the hotel industry. So this year, we reduced their budget by about $100,000 in anticipation of the continuation of the slowdown in the, in the room tax revenue.
And I know I talked to, maybe I'm saying her name wrong. Is it Erin?
Gavigan.
Gavigan, is she here?
She's here.
And I had a question for her as well, related to this funding.
Good evening. Erin Gavigan. I live and work in Ward 4.
My apologies. I was about to mess up your name pretty good.
It's okay. I'm used to it.
We had a study session, and you threw out some numbers. It, it's only 400,000 that you get. I, I say only 400,000. That's a lot of money to me, but it's, it's, it's a modest amount of money from what the tax produces. And with that 400,000, you threw out some numbers of what the return to the city is. Can you tell me that again?
Sure. Yeah. So out of a annual appropriation, as, as Anthony mentioned, you, normally around $440,000. We know through studies that we've participated in with Americans for the Arts what our return of investment is on those funds. And in an average year, that investment in the arts generates $3.8 million a year in sales tax revenue for the city of Norman and the state of Oklahoma. And the direct return on investment is, let's see here, for every dollar that goes into the arts, $119 is generated in direct spending in the city of Norman.
I would say those are impressive numbers. And for this 100,000, you had explained to us in the study session that you have this ready, locked and loaded, ready to be distributed. Can you tell me, maybe describe how those funds will be distributed and how?
Yeah, absolutely. So we came up with what is a very democratic way of distributing our hotel grants, is what we call them. We have a selection panel that's independent of any of the arts organizations who reviews every grant application. They make the recommendations of awards, depending on how much money we have each year, to the Norman Arts Council Board. When the board accepts those award recommendations, then we in turn submit that to the city of Norman as part of our annual budgeting process, and it gets rolled into the full city budget for approval.
And how many projects right now with this 100,000 that are ready to roll? How many projects is that to?
It would support 23 arts organizations.
That, that's it. I just wanted some clarification for the public because I had questions asking about it, and I wanted to put it on display in front of everybody before we got to the vote exactly what this was and how it would be used. And I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco, as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk.
The first one would be Cody Giles.
Again, again, I think my speaking is a little moot at this point. I'm pretty confident this is going to pass. But we did spend a lot of time tonight talking about, you know, money going back into local businesses and local things and what Erin much more eloquently said than I ever will be able to. I mean, a lot of money does go back into Norman from the arts. There's a lot of investment stuff. And like, a lot of your kids have been beneficiaries over those arts organizations. And as a board member of the Norman Arts Council, you know, I wanted to speak tonight just to kind of echo that. And to back up Erin, because I do believe in it. And as someone who used to attend every single event all the time, they are a part of Norman's DNA. They're a part of this and this money. While, I mean, I would ask for 10 million, but we're never going to get that. But that's okay. I would say this money is going to be incredibly well-spent, and the return on investment is inevitable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Daniel Munson.
Dan Munson, Word 6. So I love the arts. I love what it does for our kids. You know, when I think back to February 19th is when I got my second vaccine over at the Embassy Suites. And I think there's a lot of Normanites that got their vaccine at the Embassy Suites. I think they had two different pods where they had 10,000 people go through. They literally vax, they had vaccines. vax, they had vaccines for well over 100,000 people, not only just here in Norman, but throughout the state. There was a lot of people that got vaccinated at the Embassy Suites. And so what we've talked about is hotel occupancy being low. And I'd like to see this money go towards tourism and conventions. Because that feeds the arts, it feeds parks and rec, and it also feeds tourism and conventions. When I think back to my second vaccination, there was literally hundreds of people standing in line. And people were absolutely in joy. If you can, if you, if you participated in the vaccine at the Embassy Suites, you know exactly what I'm talking about. People were absolutely elated to get that vaccine. The Embassy Suites donated that facility. Where I come from, when someone does you a solid, you look for the first opportunity to return fire. And this is an opportunity that we can return fire for the Embassy Suites. Let's re, let's allocate the money towards conventions, which would positively affect them and other hotels in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Barxdale?
Gary Barxdale, Ward 8. I want to echo what Daniel had just said about, I love the arts, benefited from the arts as a kid. My kid benefited from the arts. I've played instruments, participated in art contests and the like. And so, you know, I've always had a bit of a mixed feelings about public funds going to arts, though. And because they're so subjective, you know, you may want to fund a punk rock band, and I may not like punk rock, right? I might want the country singer, or I might want, you know, opera. You might think that Piss Jesus is an awesome piece of artwork. Most of us would find it completely offensive. So to have public monies going to the arts, I've kind of had mixed feelings about all along, because they are subjective. There's nothing subjective, though, about a business owner who's had to close down their doors because of draconian shutdowns. There's nothing subjective about a property owner who cannot collect rent because they're restricted from doing so, from, again, a law that was passed that prevents them from being able to collect rent from somebody. There's nothing subjective about people struggling to feed their kids because they can't keep their businesses open. There's nothing subjective about that whatsoever. So again, I am only in favor of ARPA money being spent to incentivize the people that are suffering from this. The business owners, the people that are, some of these business owners are keeping their business doors open. Some of these people that are, that own properties that they can't collect rent because of eviction requirements or whatever by the federal government are still doing, they're surviving. But what are we doing whenever we're telling these people that, that what they're suffering as a result of draconian lockdowns is irrelevant and we want a new mural or, or some band to play because we don't think that these business owners are worthy of the money that's supposed to go to them? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
I just want to say that by supporting the arts, we are vicariously supporting small business. Because if you think about the experience economy, when somebody comes to enjoy the arts, they also come to spend their sales tax dollars at gas stations and restaurants and hotels and all the other great amenities that we have in the city. So it's not just supporting the arts, it's supporting local business through the arts. So I will happily be supporting this request and I encourage my fellow council members to do the same.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
I would just like to add that this is supplemental money. This is something that was voter-approved, tax revenue, sales tax, the Norman Ford Project. So we're just supplementing that. So this is something that we're not saying is subjective to what we think is art or whatnot. This is something that the voters actually approved. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
So yes, I'm in full support of this particular investment in ARPA funds into our arts community. I believe you said, Ms. Gavigan, that a dollar invested is a return to our community of $118. Did I get that right? Thank you. So the arts community was also impacted in an incredibly negative way. And that also has a negative impact on the rest of our economy. And they also had to adapt to being shut down and continue to provide hope to our community and something to look forward to and shifting from a in-person environment to a digital environment, which they did over and over and over again. They also were supported by a lot of grants that they've aggressively gone after over the last few years. But those were all related to live performances or live music or something that was an in-person type of art experience. And those were no longer supported either. So the arts community took a heavy hit and continued to provide hope and creativity and providing experiences when all of us were not able to do much of anything else. And as Councilmember Foreman said, this is unique in that it's part of our hotel motel tax. And we were not able to come through because of the impact of that on our community. And this is a way to reinvest into our arts community.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley?
I was going to say, I am fully in support of this as well. This will bring more revenue to our city. It supports the Medieval Fair, Jazz in June, Norman Music Fest. Those are three things that I love to attend. I watched a lot of stuff virtually last year since I couldn't be in it in person. I hope a lot of you all did as well. But I definitely support this. And if we do get to do this, think about the tourism that will come into town and the hotels that people will stay at. And so it will increase those tax revenues and increase the hotel motel taxes to hopefully give them back to that next year and get them up to the level where they need to be at so we don't have to supplement this again. But this is, like Councilmember Foreman said, this is a supplement to something that we're already doing. They're just short, shy, $100,000, which in the grand scheme, I think is a very small ask. So I'm definitely in support of this and I am ready to go smell that food at the Medieval Fair again. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
To me, this is just a business decision. It wouldn't matter if it, if it was a popsicle stand. If you said, hey, if you give $400,000 a year to the popsicle stand and it brought in $4 million in taxes, I think you'd have to do that. So subjective, objective of art or what the use is, to me, it's just a financial decision that I think benefits our city.
Thank you. Seeing no other council comment, I too look forward to supporting this. The arts are one of the many beautiful things that make Norman what it is. So that's 100% of my support. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you. Onto our final item of the night, item 26, Consideration of Ordinance 2122-2 upon second and final reading to grant special use for an automobile service station, a car wash in the C1 Local Commercial District for Lot 3 in Block 1 of Prairie Creek Edition, Section 5, for the severability thereof near the southwest corner of 36 Avenue and Rock Creek Road, 2331 36 Avenue Northwest. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
I was going to say, my name is Kirk Daniels with Cochrane Engineering, and I won't say anything about COVID vaccines or ask for funding. I promise you. I would ask for your favorable vote on a special use permit in your C1 zoning. And there it is. So we do have the presentation up there. Again, Kirk Daniels with Cochrane Engineering, 80 East Main Street, Winchfield, Missouri, here representing Club Car Wash. I'll make this quick because I'm sure you've been here a while, as we all have. And that's a fast one. This is preliminary side is what we're showing you here. What we're proposing is a ton of car wash. The car wash is approximately 5,600, 5,700 square feet. As you can see here, we have an access onto 36 Avenue over to the west. And then also, we have one up on Rock Creek. The alignment on Rock Creek is adjusted a little bit over from the property line. What we tried to do there is join in with the Walmart parking lot. What we've proposed here is 20 vacuum bays, three parking places, and then one, one handicap place. Going on to the next one, and I think it goes fast. There you go. This is a rendering of what it would look like. It's a car wash. The owner of this takes high pride in what his car washes look like. He has impeccable lawn care. We have strict guidelines on what we have to design to make sure it looks impeccable at all times. So he is very good about that. Getting on the next one, oop, it goes fast. There's just some side views of it. Sorry, they're not in color. He has some accent windows, so on and so forth. And with that, we would ask for your favorable recommendation on the special use, not to belabor anything else.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. The only question I really had was about that sort of alleyway that's back there. It's, it's paved, but it's overgrown and doesn't look like it's used for anything. Not sure where it even came from. It looks like you'll be improving that entire.
Is that on the east side?
That would be on the east side of the park.
Yes, I know what you're talking about. Yes, we would propose to put a drive lane. This is just north of the, of the medical facility. There's two vacant lots. It will still be north of us. And the access drive that we, we would be putting that would align with Walmart would be the proposed access for any of those other two lots that come in. Whether they sought, sought other access points, I don't know. But this would be an improvement for the one you're talking about, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just couldn't tell if it was improving this existing thing or building next to it or not. So, okay. And you said the, the drive does line up with the Walmart part, Walmart drive across the street.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
It's actually more of a comment, so I can save it for comments.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Excuse me. Thank you for that presentation. I really only have one question. And that is concerning the waving of the fence requirement because it's, it would be sitting on the floodway. And I never want to pass up an opportunity to discuss your stormwater mitigation plan. I noticed there's an existing detention basin already. So if you could just address how you were going to manage the stormwater mitigation and if the floodway is causing any issues.
We would work with the existing basin. Any, any guidelines we have there, we'd work with it. And also onsite, if it's required, we meet all applicable codes. A lot of our sites do have underground detention. I'm not saying this one would. Right now, we have 46% impervious area. So we do have a lot of green space. We'd like to incorporate any type of, anything that's required is above-ground basins if possible. But we would like to utilize what's there today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk informs me, there is no public comment signed up for this item. So is there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Peacock?
Thank you. Yeah, so this current C1 zoning classification is intended for retail and trade. And I personally don't feel that this project meets the highest and best use of that zoning classification. So I unfortunately will not be able to support this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of seven to two. Voting against, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I know we're tired, but hang in there, guys. To adopt the ordinance on final reading, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of seven to two. Voting against, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. Now on to miscellaneous comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk?
Okay, our first speaker, and I'm probably going to mess this up. I apologize. Gwen Guyer?
Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Gwen Guyer. I'm a member of Ward 5. And I'm here as a severe, profound high school special education teacher at Little X Public Schools and wanted to come visit with you tonight about something that we could use the city's help on. This is a need that the families that I have served have brought to my attention. One of the most important factors to leading to a long, healthy, enriched, excuse me, life is employment. It allows you to provide for your family, to build relationships and connections, and to provide a sense of self-worth. I have several students that are not able to drive, but would like to have jobs in the Norman community. And with talks underway about revamping our cart system, I would like for the council to consider adding a rural stop to the cart system. Places like the Cliffs Oak Cove Marina, the casino, Harps Grocery Store, even though I know it's just a little bit outside of the boundaries. And the Biccon Valley Housing Area would be a huge help to the rural Norman community area. Families would be able to have better access to jobs, positions, as well as opportunities for students to link into the university and VOTEC students that are wanting to attend programs but do not have adequate transportation, such as like if they're from a single-parent family. We are hoping to take advantage of the new Not Your Average Show coffee and ice cream shop that has been installed at OU, which is super fantastic for our students. The families are super excited about that opportunity to, to practice our job skills as well as possibly gaining employment. When I visited with my families that I serve, the families that participate in our Special Olympics team, they said that transportation is the biggest barrier to employment at this time. I appreciate the council's time and consideration on this very important possible addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. You can grab her afterwards.
Next speaker, Catherine Cox. I'm sorry, I can't remember if she left or not. Okay. Cody Giles. Giles. I don't know why I can never say your name. So sorry.
I've been called much worse.
Yeah, I just want to just final, first off, Ms. Walker, I certainly didn't mean to impugn your legal ability to know whether something is legal or not. I just know from living in this town long enough to know that there have been some crazy lawsuits come through. And I would hate for something as, you know, helpful and good-intended as a vaccine incentive program to be another one of those. So certainly didn't mean to impugn your ability to be legal. Also, thank you for passing the money for the Arts Council. Again, as an, as a Arts Council Board member, I know we are incredibly appreciative of that. And I thank you for that. And I know you guys have a hard job, and I know everyone says that. I don't agree with all of you all the time. And a lot of you, I know you personally, and I've spoken to you about things I didn't agree with and things I do agree with. And I think that it's a give and take. I think there, you know, those of you who are more open than others, and that's okay. But I thank you for tonight and I thank you for the, for the appropriation of money for the Arts Council specifically. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Daniel Munson?
Hi, Dan Munson, Ward 6. I'd like to talk about electricity. I think the reliability of electricity in Norman has reduced over the last couple of years. I think there's been a lot more power outages. And I'm not talking just about weather-related power outages. I'm just, I'm talking about general power outages. So I have a couple theories on why that is. One of them is
One of them is there's just more electric cars on the road, so they're, they're taking demand. The, the city, they recently purchased two electric buses, that's going to be adding to the demand for the electrical grid. And so, another, another business that I think is drawing a lot of electricity from the grid is medical marijuana. So it, it requires between 2,000 and 3,000 kilowatts of power to make 16 ounces of medical marijuana. And so, the largest medical marijuana producer in Oklahoma does about 100 pounds a month. And so if the average medical marijuana grower is producing, let's say 10 pounds, I don't know if that's right or not, I'm picking a number here. So if they produce 10 pounds a month and we have 100 and I believe it's either 14 or 16 growers, that's going to be the equivalent of about 1,900 homes. So one home will take about 1,200 kilowatts of, of power. So I'd like, the City of Norman, so now is the perfect time. Now is the perfect time to consider municipal power. There's, I believe, 46 municipal power plants in Oklahoma and there is a significant federal infrastructure bill that's going to be spent soon. There's, I think, 1.5 or 6 trillion dollars. It's, it's a lot of money. One of the items that's earmarked in there is transmission lines. It's $73 billion for transmission lines. Other money that's allocated in there is for electrical vehicles and solar power. So I think if there's any time, if there's any time that the City of Norman should consider doing a power plant, it's now because I think we could take advantage of federal dollars. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Lowe? Okay.
All right, thank you all for attending tonight. This meeting is adjourned.